Well, we'll go ahead and have a work session called to order. The recorder, please call it all.
President.
Counselor Evans? Counselor Black? Counselor Merritt H?
Here.
Counselor Savage?
Here.
Counselor Sennett?
Here.
Mayor Sosek?
Here.
Take over, this is Carrie Connolly, the new attorney, one of several. So, we're starting at Rule 11. We're picking up from the prior council work session reviewing proposed changes to the council rules. They should, you have a track change version. And we got to Rule 11 last time, appearance of interest to citizens. Staff and I agreed we should revisit with you just to double check. 10.5 in 10, appearance of interest to citizens isn't moving, staying where it is. Is that right? That was what we gathered from kind of a wide-ranging conversation. Okay, I'm seeing some head nodding, so thank you. So, picking back up with then Rule 11.
Excuse me?
Yes?
I just wanted, I didn't know we were, I know we were eager to go, but could we look at number five real quick when it says quorum? Was it ever, or is it defined in the charter what actually quorum is?
Are we looking?
Rule, Rule number six, or five?
Rule five, okay, from there. Now, let me look and see it in your charter. It's not a rule that we're proposing to change, so.
But it didn't specify what a quorum is.
I looked a while back in our charter.
Section 12.
It specifies that a quorum is a majority of the members of the body, meaning if, for example, you know, a meteor struck and there were only two members of the body, they would, still, those two would form a quorum.
Well, like, for the proposal, the recent proposal to recall four counselors, what would that do to quorum?
So, I disagree, sorry. Jake?
Listen to her, not me.
It says, "Section 12 quorum, a majority of the council members is a quorum to conduct And it says that the council consists of a mayor and six counselors. So, I wouldn't make that leap without looking at it more closely, that less than a, you know, if you have a small number, actually, our opinion in other cities is that if, if the council's reduced below a quorum due to recall, then you're stuck. So, the better way to go is to never have that many off at the same time. One could step down and be replaced, and so that you do kind of a tiered removal and replacement, so that you never have less than a quorum that then can do no city business.
So, would it be to our advantage to define quorum here? What, that it's 50% of the seven members, or whatever?
Well, anything you put in your rules that's different than the charter is irrelevant because the charter's going to govern. And so, you may as well, if you want to change what constitutes a quorum, we would put that to the citizens for a vote. I think I just read today, Mindy, was it, is it three counselors? Thanks. Great thing for everybody to be aware of, and members of the public as well.
Sorry to get you up track there, but that was put to me by a constituent.
Let's see, so we're looking at section 11. And then the primary change is here, limiting public comments to three instead of five minutes. And the limit is 30 minutes unless increased with council approval. The three is a change, increased with council approval, that's just following your current practices, so I don't think that's too controversial. The primary change to this section is that second new paragraph, which is accommodating and addressing participation via virtual means. So, again, in 2021, we were proposing changes to the council rules because all of a sudden we needed to have virtual participation due to the urgency at the time, and then the subsequent change to the law. So, is there anything in there that concerns you? What we tried to do is put individuals, members of the public appearing virtually on the same footing as members of the public appearing in person, and wanting staff to have an opportunity to know in advance who's coming, the mayor then to know the names to call, sort of a heads up, is anybody out there waiting in virtual land in case we're having technical difficulties and I'm seeing them all? A hot hand?
Thank you, Mayor. This way I read this new paragraph is that, time permitting, within the 30-minute public comment, the council may unanimously permit additional comment from the public without the name signups or otherwise required by this rule. So, does that, that covered some of the concerns that we had, that we didn't want to limit the ability of the public to comment?
I agree.
If I understood.
I agree. I think, you know, we're trying to follow up best practices, let's have people sign up in advance, and also a recognition that not everybody has that opportunity or might know in advance. But the city rules aren't, and they may just show up, in which case they still have an opportunity to speak.
My, Mayor, it's my understanding, and we're learning about Zoom and various different virtue, virtue, virtual platforms, where you don't show all the attendees, I think it's important, I believe that if we're going to continue that policy, it's important that the folks sign up that's going to be virtually ahead of time, so that we know that they want to get public comment, because we would know if they're not being shown, everybody being shown, how they would get acknowledged to give public comment. And the reason behind that is, maybe each of you know, but it's my understanding that people do inappropriate things, hijack the virtual platforms and do things, and by not allowing them to be visually seen at all the times, then that kind of reduces the amount of possibility that that would take place.
So, are you advocating to remove that sentence, the time permitting within 30 minutes, the council may unanimously permit additional comment from the public without advanced signup, if otherwise required? I just, I'm wondering if that's what's.
I'm not advocating for it, but if that applies to the virtual, then I don't know how you're going to know if someone virtually wants to. If you're extending the comment period for the virtual people, I don't know how you know that they need to, they would, they desire to get comment, because you can't, you know, seeing them like right now.
Yeah, I think that could be a practical difficulty. But I, I mean, I know as a matter of law, that offering, making the statement, is anybody out there that wants to speak? And having a prior signup process is legally sufficient, but whether it's causing you concern that a lot of people are going to be showing up and not be able to see, be seen or heard, I think then would, I think that address can only be, that concern can only be addressed by removing that last sentence, and I'm not sure you want to go that far. I think, I think on balance, it's better to potentially sometimes open it up for additional public comment, even if somebody hasn't signed up in advance, as opposed to not allowing that ever, just because we're concerned that some people may be out there that we can't see. So, I, but that's a policy choice, I just wanted to outline it for you.
This may be a limit to the technology, but can we set it up so that, you know, people can use their raise the hand feature, and, you know, you as the city reporter can see that, and then you can let them come in, come in, let them speak, and then close back out afterwards? I don't know whether the technology allows you to do that.
Yeah, the GoToMeeting currently has that feature available, but we close down the hand raising, what can be seen.
But we could certainly allow it, and I could go switch, flip the switch that says, okay, hand raising is now allowed, say, raise your hand if you want to talk. And even if we went to some other platform that didn't have that specific thing, we can find some sort of workaround, even if it's, hey, if you're online and you really want to talk, text Jake at this phone number and he'll get your, you know, he'll set you up to be able to be heard or something.
I'm less familiar with GoToMeeting, but I know that Zoom has that capability to basically let you control, you know, who comes on, who goes off, and, you know, if you have someone who's doing something untoward, even after they've raised their hand and been let on, zap, internal.
Yeah, GoToMeeting does have that same feature, we have to change our processes of it, but it does have that feature, which is what we use for public hearings. So, we do the same thing, we make that announcement, and then we always, you know, pop that open, populate the screen, so that we could look to see if there is, in fact, somebody who wanted to speak to public.
That was my exact same question, although I'm kind of wondering, is, as far as, like, jobs to do on your, like, is that something that can be tasked, to do during the meeting or we have a lot going on that we shouldn't task it to somebody else, like?
It'll probably be me during the flow of the meeting, because Mindy's got enough stuff going on over there.
Traditionally, it's the city reporter, but can't you question, yes, it is possible, and yes, there is a question. So, if maybe it's the city reporter's job, they don't have.
Exactly. Or does it need?
Yeah.
I actually, is there another paper copy of this? I swore I followed the line.
Okay, well, we will incorporate those shown changes to section 11, and just note that it, or Rule 11, whatever it's called, it continues on to the, oh, no, I'm sorry, this is 12, but continues on to the next page, the only change is to limit from five to three, and it clarifies that others, not the applicant, are limited to three minutes, applicant gets more time than that in a quasi-judicial public hearing setting. So, that's not just your regular public comment. The same change shows up in section 14. 15 has that change that we talked about last time, that we're moving to council members to clarify that it's the council, council members and the mayor. Now, we leap ahead, 15, 2.2.3 has another change from five to three minutes. But the next substantive changes are section 17, with that same council law to council member, and then a really long comment from me in the margin about that last sentence, "Council members must announce the legal reason or justification for abstaining from voting." So, I think that the reason that there's a big, long note from me about that is that it was, did David have a suggested change that I recommended against? Do you remember, Mindy?
I think so, we just have had some challenges in voting to try and look to see who's, who's actually voting, and then if we're not hearing a particular voice and it's moving on to the next, it's just been challenging, and there was one instance where we couldn't tell if the counselor actually voted, and then how would we, is that considered in favor, or is it considered, do you remember that conversation?
Yep, yep. So, there's two issues. The first is, we need to know how you're voting and who's voting. That's, that's important for the minutes to reflect. But then, we also need to understand what is the impact of not voting on a motion to pass, does it pass or fail? Does it count as a no vote? Is it a yes vote when you're abstaining? And the AGs, what I wrote out there, is an abstention does not count, it's either an affirmative or negative vote. I really think that's the right way, that if, I don't think that somebody not voting should be able to defeat a motion, it shouldn't count as a no. If they wanted to vote, they can vote, and if they're precluded because of a legal actual conflict, then it shouldn't count one way or the other in terms of the council decision. So, I'm not suggesting any changes there, I think that there were some changes that were potentially being proposed that I thought that's not being proposed. It is only an actual conflict of interest, in my opinion, that is what would keep you from voting. A bias potentially in a planning commission scenario, so in a quasi-judicial setting, there's a couple other reasons that you might be precluded from voting, but in your normal day-to-day work as a council, if you have an actual conflict, that's what's going to keep you out of it, potential conflict you announce.
How do you know when it's going to be a roll call vote and when it's a voice vote?
I'm going to defer to Mindy, because she's the magic one.
So, resolutions and ordinances essentially would be the, where we call.
Roll call?
Yeah.
Because the time I didn't vote, I was expecting a roll call, and then if the vote was over before I, I said, what happened? You know, I got caught completely off guard.
But the minutes do need to show, not necessarily, do the minutes need to show on every vote, who voted how?
We do.
Okay, all right, good. That's, I just, even if there's not a roll call, you're still parsing it out?
Correct.
Thank you.
And the challenge, just to expand on that a bit, the challenge is if someone is silent and doesn't vote yet, hasn't abstained, intentionally abstained, then what do I do with that not vote? So, that's the challenge.
Can you, could you ask, or didn't see your vote, or didn't hear your vote?
Absolutely. And I've been trying to be better, you know, unanimous, or motion passes, or.
Show a hand or something?
Actually, the counselor, that is very helpful, because it's hard for me to see how good this area, and maybe that'll change when we work on the seating, but I often look to be kind of perch up in my chair a little bit to see, maybe I can see a hand, and I've noticed you've been doing that, and it is very helpful.
Yeah, since I got burned.
Do we need to talk a little bit more about abstaining? I know that sometimes it feels better to be able to abstain if it's a really difficult vote, but you all have been elected to make those difficult decisions, and so I, that's, that's one of the reasons that I'm, I push to make sure that you understand, you only abstain when it's legally supportable. So, Sergeant at Arms, I'm going to defer to Mike, because I know that there was some conversation behind the scenes, that the issue is that David thought this should be removed. It's always been in there, I don't know that it had caused anybody problems, but David pulled it out to say it's his, it was, it's the city manager's job to be able to put some, an officer in this room, and if he needed them to be doing something else, he didn't want to have a rule that undermined his authority. So, I know, I, Mike, that's setting it up.
Well, good evening, Your Honor, members of the council. You know, as far as I'm concerned, the police chief can serve as the sergeant-at-arms, and as a practical matter, there may be times when the police chief is not available, or when the police chief is out doing other police chief things than being at a city council meeting. We may assign another officer. There are times where we have more controversial items on the agenda than other times, tonight's agenda is fairly innocuous, I think. And we may assign more than one officer to be at those meetings. So, you know, again, it's something the chief and I can work out.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Is it possible to empower the sergeant-at-arms to maybe potentially catch things that we don't necessarily see up here? Maybe they can tap somebody on the shoulder or something, what if you don't see it, but they can catch that?
You know, part of it is, is that we want to defer to, you know, the chair of need it, the presiding officer, that if somebody is being disrupted, the presiding officer can certainly say to the chief, you know what, we have some decorum here, can we get this person to quiet down or whatever? You know, the chief can use his own discretion to also act on his own. But again, initially, I think we defer to the presiding officer.
Okay, so no changes there. Section 21, it just starts now, the presiding officer will individually invite members of the public who signed up to address the council, reflecting that we're having people sign up to the extent possible. And the other point that I want to call out is, there has been public comment and public discomfort about needing to announce citizens' names and addresses. I think the argument is multifold, I think some individuals here don't feel like their address is relevant, they still have important things to say, whether or not they're a citizen. I think some individuals have been frightened to put their address in the record because of repercussions after the meeting. And as it turns out, I talked with my partner about this, because it's, again, it's something that's always been there, and I've never really had a problem with it, but I think it's becoming more common not to require people to give their address. If they want to, they certainly may, and if they don't want to, that's not a requirement that you have to require before they can move forward with their comments. And the only time that it's really critical is in a quasi-judicial hearing. And so, in a quasi-judicial hearing, the way that the scripts are moving is to say, if you want notice after this, for us to be able to follow up with you, you have to put your IBS into the record. So, they understand the repercussions of not putting it into the record, but it isn't later held against the city. If they choose not to, you don't have to send them notice, you don't, staff wouldn't have to run it down. And, so that's kind of, that was a new one for me, and I thought it would be interesting for you all to then be able to evaluate if you want to make changes to this section 21 with regard to the address. And I also thought staff might have something to put on that. Serious questions, in order to speak, so I was supporting that.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no problem with leaving it off, but it makes me think about my husband who works for the Keating School District, just had somebody from Minnesota come in and petition the school board and do all these things, and it's like, you don't even live here. So, I'm not opposed to this, but at the same time, if we're making rules that five years from now we need to adhere to, it stands to reason that it would be good to document somewhere, you know, Suzie lives in Minnesota, and this comment, while it's great, may not necessarily apply, you know, that might be nice to know.
I agree, I understand that motivation to want to know who does live within your boundaries and who's here to just contribute new and different ideas.
I believe the school district here is now asking that basic question, state whether or not you live within the boundaries of the district. Could do something of that nature, I do think it's relevant to know, you know, what, you know, general skinning people have.
Without requiring physical address.
Right.
I would also be interested to know if they live within the city limits, because they, they are true constituents, because they vote, pay taxes. That's, if I'm going to be valuing testimony, I'm going to want to put more weight on the person that's more affected by our actions.
Thank you, Mayor. I would propose that we have people state their name, state whether they live within city limits or not, and what ward they live in, if they do live in, will have to live in one ward, but if they know which ward, and we could have a little map on the dais for people to be like, I live in this ward. I am concerned about the chilling effect of having people knowing, in order to give public comment, I have to tell people my address, and how that can feel like, well, maybe they're going to retaliate against me or come to my home, that's not, we want people to feel like they can come give public comment.
Okay, I can take a stab at, if everybody's in agreement, that that's a good shift. So, the order into quorum, I called out Sergeant-at-arms in case 20, section 19 was going to go away, and we just added the reference to a virtual meeting.
So, that Sergeant-at-arms, if that goes away?
It's not going to go away.
It's not going to go away.
Right. Based on what we just, this discussion we just had, that, that at least was my direction. 22.1.1 is in addition, based on problems that were arising from disrespect shown by members of the public to city staff in the past, and it is, so what you, failure to refer to city employees by the proper title would be sufficient cause for the presiding officer to remove an individual from the meeting or the virtual meeting platform. My guess is that that wouldn't be, so if somebody is referring to Faye, for instance, sorry to call on you, Faye, but, you know, that they're not using this proper title, I'm assuming the presiding officer wouldn't invoke this rule. But if instead it was something offensive to or about Faye, you would have the option then, as the presiding officer, to call that out and say, could you please refer to them by the proper title? And if that bad behavior continued, you would have the opportunity to say, sorry, pretend. What do you all think about that? Okay. 22.1.4, we just added the word threatening. 22.1.5, we changed meeting hall to facility, that was to reflect the reality that sometimes council meetings are not held as hall. I think the next ones are just adding virtual platform, even 22.2 is addressing that virtual meeting attendance and participation. I'm saying a hand. So, so, 7.3 is counselors discuss, talking amongst counselors, and 22.1 is members of the public talking about or to staff and the council. But I agree, what you're saying is that, yes, we all are being held to this level, this expectation of mutual respect, and so, what's good for the goose is good for the dandure. You all are held to the same standard as, and would like the members of the public to extend that to your staff. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that's what we're trying to achieve. If I have, I have a specific. In that specific, I'll put some questions. I have, you know, that's a statement, that's sort of. I know, goodness.
Oh, I see, you wanted to import the language from 7.3 into this 22.1.1? What is the rest of the council that I was looking down, so I'm sorry, I didn't, there were heads nodding, but, okay. I found last time that if I didn't take good notes, and I just had a mark next to something, I came back later and I'm like, yeah, I don't know what to do there, so, okay. Were there any questions about 22.2? Other than the 22.2.4 that somebody pointed out last time? It just said during virtual attendance periods where the, that section's supposed to end, and I would be a hand. So, 23? That's like, trying to reflect the COVID restrictions that were in, that applied to public meetings, needed to have a density minimum or density maximum, I guess, so we're calling that out in there. Then 24. So all of you, all public officials are bound to Oregon, Oregon ethics. And the question, I guess, in adding in here is, is it helpful to outline what those basic requirements are in your rules so that incoming counselors are aware of them and that you have a shorthand way to refer to them quickly? Whether or not they're in here, they apply to you. So it isn't, do we want to impose this on ourselves? The question is, is this convenient to have here? Is it convenient, not only for you, but is it helpful for incoming counselors? And most council rules do have this code of ethics included, which is why we added it, because it seemed like an omission. But certainly not required. I'm sorry, I just jumped ahead. Yes, 24. So my understanding, what I'm hearing is that you, these rules are fine as they're proposed. The 22.2.3 turn on video, you're, you're okay with that as long as their name is there so that you can see individuals? Or do you want individual faces there, not asking individuals to turn off their videos? So the first line of 22.2, it says, the city may mute or turn off any member of the public's video at any time for violation of the rules. And then the rest of it is, is rules that we are asking the public to comply with. Please stay on mute, sign up in advance, turn off your video unless you're present to the council. Don't be doing unlawful activity while you're virtually attending. I think that was, don't be on your phone and drive. But there's other things too, we want to see.
I don't understand how that needs to be in the council rules. That sounds more like an administrative thing.
That's what, I, I agree. I think that wouldn't be in the rules, but I, I think based on the rules as they're proposed, this implies at least that everybody would be, there would be individual boxes with names, but then the videos would be turned off. And so you would, you would know the number of attendees you, my eyesight's that. I don't think I can read individual names, but maybe I could. But what it looks like. And so I guess that, this is, I think, how staff is anticipating your, the virtual side of meetings would look. Is that acceptable?
Mayor, I've got a question regarding staff. So sometimes we attend in person because we're, we sit there, you're at the meeting, just putting in standard practice, you usually have a box of persons. You know that staff is available. Maybe you will turn on cameras for staff members, correct? So we could see for anyone, anyone. Well, even, even if staff is listening, you could see that. It's like it's president, with that's right, right, in generating stuff. I don't, I don't know if I hear too much about knowing who's on. There's so many people, both president and, it's, we don't know who it is. But then there's other people and you, you know the name, so I can go lead your way on that. Well, we can see the numbers too.
In this, so, so this would be the, the screenshot. This is what you would be seeing, unless somebody virtually appearing speaking. You'd be able to see their faces.
So you're only being able to see probably a hundred thousand or so. If there were 30 people online and you couldn't see all 30 people, you'd just see the top.
But Jake, can you say about that?
That's true. I mean, I suppose at any point you could say, hey, could you please scroll down the thing so we can see the rest of the list or something? As a matter of course, it would just sit like this usually.
But in addition to what you've got there, you would also actually see the public.
We could, like, right now, we can have it either just the list of names or you can set it up where it has those squares. Mindy, instead of view active cameras, you switch that to view everybody? So you've got the third one there. And if we had like 15 people, you'd get these little bit of chicklets, you know, with people's faces or initials on them. For a presenter, yeah, we can, we can switch that. So it's like, let's just show who's talking or whatever. Yeah. One, one of the things to keep in mind about that is we have no say over what's going on in the background.
Why we're saying, just turn it off.
Yeah.
Okay, so the rules sound good. And we also have a little bit of direction, admin direction.
Yeah, admin direction. That's what I was looking for. So it doesn't necessarily need to be a rule. But what I'm hearing almost everyone say is that they'd like to see the view like this, like it is now.
And then potentially at some points, they might ask. Yeah, there's the question. Do you want it like this or do you want to put both?
The list of names.
The list of names and the boxes? That's what they want to. But actually, yeah, that's okay. They could put in resident and you'd see the letter R.
But you put, like, Smith.
Then it would say, I'm an ax and letters and you'd see Mike Smith.
For the record, when, when we started this conversation, there were four people on. The fourth person was Citizen. We do have technology, we can make staff members presenters so that they appear even if other people wouldn't. That's something we can do from the sun. So like if, if Bert were at home right now, we could say, okay, Bert's a presenter. And then, boy, Bert pops up just like the. Right, but we could, this is a matter of course, make all staffers presenters. They don't have to present, but then they would be invisible.
Yeah, I was just going to say the same thing that you were, is this that, you know, if, if we're discussing budget and Bert happens to be at home and Bert wants to chime in, she can, you know, do the raise your hand feature. And, you know, you as the chair may see the raise your hand. If you don't, sitting in order can certainly bring your attention that there's a raise your hand coming from Bert as part of the meeting.
Do you make us presenters? Oh, would you come in virtually? Yeah.
Okay. So that side of things might be a little bit of trial and error. You might want to experiment around a little bit. Doesn't change what we're putting in the rules. 24, I did the little intro about, do you want code of ethics in your rules? And yes, I'm ready to take questions.
I, I think it's fine that they're in there. If you could state more emphatically or clearly that that's what this is. This is the state rule.
Okay.
These aren't valid.
Right. Okay, right. I can even take that out, like this just echoes.
Applicable provisions of the state of Oregon's government laws that you're capable of, or something to that.
The, the reason that second sentence is there, so yes, that this is intended to reflect the current rules. The reason that that event of conflicts phrase is there is because that is in the state of flux, they're changing the ethics rules. Ethics commission is taking on more responsibilities. And so we want to make sure that state law, everybody understands state law will always govern, even if it's slightly different. But I will clarify that these are intended to set out Oregon ethics laws at the time of adoption or something like that. The goal is that these reflect existing ethics laws. Is that, okay?
I just see people, it's useful to know that those are the state laws.
Got it.
Thank you so much, Mayor. It were kind of in flux, you know, I'm thinking long term, right? But we're building right here for the last five, 10 years, hopefully. Last longer. But if things are in flux and moving bases, you know, I like the idea of saying, these are current Oregon laws that we're binding by. For most current laws, we go to, you know, and reference that things are in flux. You know, I think that are fully, you know, that, that changes, so rules any tweaks every so often. You can pull this page down, put another page in. How do you reference that and put it into a living dog?
Oh, that's ORS chapter 244. It just all is there.
So always, every time you know the change, it's always going to be ORS 244.
Right.
Okay, so just making sure.
Yep. And I'll just double check, I'll read those all again. Might have been a while. We've all gone over it pretty closely. Well, let's see. Okay, so some of these at the end are your own. So code of ethics is 24.1. The rest of those are is council imposed guidance on council members. Encourage to conduct themselves to bring credit upon the city. If the council member represents the city before another public body, you should represent the majority position of the council so that you're not representing the council without authorization. Individual council members are not authorized to direct or interfere with staff operations. That is actually somewhat reflected in your council, in your charter, although that is don't enter the city manager. Have to talk about that in the, in the future role, you'll see. And then it talks about 24.5, personal media, personal social media accounts. You presenting this, again, just pulling you back to the majority position of the council so that you're representing the city. If you want to represent yourself individually, then you identify that really clearly. I'm speaking as my, on behalf of myself, I'm not speaking as a council, counselor on behalf of the city. So these, so actually, coming back to your point, Councilor Stenit, not all of these are in Oregon ethics laws. And some of them are just good guidance for counselors to know. It's what we talk about in trainings. It's kind of, you know, act within your scope of authority that I provided for each of the trainings that I give to this body. So, but if anybody has concerns or questions about those, we should talk about it. We, the, the council's already adopted the city's electronic communications policy. This is flagging it because I swear, since it was adopted, nobody remembers that it's in place. So we're putting it there, just referencing it in 24.8.
24.3. Second. Sentence. Personal opinions and comments may be expressed with or through the certification and statements to the position. The city council, this is, this relates to student or public body, agency, community organization, media. So this one, I haven't reminded. Right. That's fascinating to say. There's too many. I understand the principle, principle is that you represent the position of the council. And this, we have, this is happening quite often. However, media is a very, very broad term. Community organization is a very, very broad term. That's the business that you're not in. Let's just say that you're in a. This isn't, this doesn't say anything about, as it relates to council business. Specific decisions that were made together as a council, as far as I.
The, the first sentence there, if a council member represents the city before another public body. So when you're speaking on behalf of the city, that's when this stuff kicks in. It's not like when you're, you know, hanging out at the barber shop with your buddies and you're like, man, I thought that was a terrible decision. That, this doesn't cover that. It's like when you're, you know, addressing a group and they're like, so what does the city have to say about this item? And you say, well, this is a terrible idea and it's, it's awful and, you know, we shouldn't do it if that's not what the council as a whole said and you shouldn't be representing the city in science.
Fair. It seems to also remember some ethics training where it's very pushing was that you were always representing the city.
In a small town, it is really hard to take that hat off. So, but I, I, the rule is. So I like that. And I, I do agree that anywhere you go, you're, to some extent, everybody's computing the city to you. So then, yeah, I want you to be really careful if you're speaking in a church or speaking somewhere and you're speaking about the city or city business, express personal opinions to be really clear. I don't have my counselor hat on, I'm speaking in my individual capacity as a parent or I'm speaking in my individual capacity as a parishioner or whatever it is. To be cognizant of that, yeah.
Certainly agree with the sentiment to be cognizant of it, to do your best. This is may be expressed. There's no outside of that, slip ups, there's no. To me, it's just too. It doesn't mesh with just the reality of what we operate. Like I, the issue is, no, I agree that I will only ever express my public opinion, my opinion, my personal opinion and qualify it as. and qualify it as not in part of the council. Certain contexts in a community that I'm not, like, I have no reason to believe that this is a representative of the city, so I'm just not going to agree. To say I almost qualify every statement, but this is my personal opinion and not to, you know, the council, not to.
So what is, what, how do you want to handle the setting a guideline for you all and future councillors to, to share this kind of common goal of, we're gonna be, we're gonna try to be clear. When we're wearing our councillor hat, we're going to be speaking on behalf of the majority. And when we're expressing our personal opinions, we're gonna be clear that that's our personal opinion.
Interesting.
Exactly, that's perfect. And that's what I always do. I, I may have a different, it was not the majority, but I got a different opinion. But that's still my opinion. That's what Bert is saying.
I'm just trying to ask, I mean, you probably all
Yes, that I don't speak for the whole council, but I did like this opinion. And the way this reads, it sounds like we all can say that. I can, I can try to wordsmith it, I'm not, I, I love that you like what I just said, and I'm guessing Mindy has it recorded, so. And see if I can do a really good job trying to paraphrase that instead of this. I, of course, me, I look at this and I'm like, well, I think I just, I think that's what this is supposed to say. So, I guess I could, again, try to wordsmith it, let's see what we come up with.
It's really vulnerable, concerns, all the past rules, yes, you lost this, you have that business.
I can tell you that this body cannot remove an elected official. This body can say, I heard, or I've seen you post on Facebook five million times, and we've tried to remind you every time, can we catch it? And you're misstating the majority position of the council. And now we're gonna talk about that publicly. That's what censure is, and that's what this body can do already. There is no removal of an elected official, just, there's kind of no teeth in council meetings. Except to set expectations and be able to point people out there not following the rules, point them to where it says, hey, look, remember we agreed on this, or a prior council agreed, we're gonna do X, Y, and Z. So, I don't want you to feel threatened, you know, agreeing that this is your aspirational goal and you want to try to distinguish between your councillor role and your personal opinions. If you don't do it, nothing can happen except for somebody reminding you, hey, remember, let's have this written this way. So, we're, yeah.
It seems rather narrow, anyway. Should always present the majority position of the council, that almost just sounds like just recounting what happened. Telling people, this is how the council vote. That's representing the city. It seems like that doesn't even happen at all. I mean, I feel like I'm kind of a councillor always, that's why someone would want to know anything about council business anywhere. Why would they talk to me about?
Okay, well, it's just
Anyway.
A circum, a factual example would be the, the council votes to put something on the ballot. And one councillor votes against it. That councillor who votes against it is asked publicly, what, tell me, tell me the thought process behind this. Like, why is this on the ballot? And that councillor really should be able to articulate, these are the priorities that the majority of the council found. These are why we're raising money. You know, it's on record, I voted against it, but here's the position of the majority. So it's not just the vote, it's being able to talk about what are the benefits of the way that the majority of the council is going. Does that make sense?
Sure.
Okay. So I, I understand there's a little bit of work on two, twenty-four point three. Are there any issues with the, the rest of those twenty-four subsections? I mean, I, I think you should look at twenty-four point six. It's talking about councillor using personal social media accounts as communication. It's a really touchy subject. Statewide, everywhere. And it's good, okay, that's great. And I, and it also includes that reminder of, hey, you're creating public records. So, let's, let's put Mindy in, make sure those get there so that you don't have to turn yourself on over sometime, sometime down the line. And you're obviously not authorized to post to the city's social media accounts. And we already talked about the electronic communications policy. Okay, so we, we're moving to that censure provision. I, I did just give you kind of like a lurb on. It's here because it repeats back what you already can do without it being here. And it's kind of clarifying for you and members of the public and incoming councillors. No, you can't be removed from office. You can be investigated. A, a majority of the council could decide, we want to talk about this and chastise you publicly and ask you to please not repeat this behavior in the future. That's it. I'm so sorry. Where is it? What's the heading, flags? Oh, oh, oh. Are you wanting to change that must to should, is that what you're saying? What does everybody else think about that?
I didn't hear that.
So in twenty-four point five, where it says if a council member wishes to use personal social, social media to present information representative of the city, that councillor member, and it says must always present the majority position. The, the recommendation is change the must to should. Okay. That actually really helps me then, understand what type of words I need to do. Do we want to talk about adding the censure, I see it's seven, and the meeting's starting? Or do we want to come back? That's the, we'll
How close are we?
You're so close, you're almost done. I would think that that would be any, a range of options up to the, what's done for employment investigations, hiring an investigator to do a fact-finding draft or report. So it could just be, we're delegating authority to a particular member to do an investigation. It could be asking staff, could you please investigate X, Y, and Z, what happened, and then it's been to come back and report to us. All the way up to the, the majority of the council would like to retain an investigator and look into these particular facts.
So, can see, can see what we have. Like, costing individual members of the if they have to comply.
Even responding to investigation, responding to an investigator. Well, it's just, it's to give the body, it's to articulate what the body already can do. Body could ask staff to do something. Body could delegate to a, the councillor, follow up on this. Individual councillors who are the subject of the investigation, I think this is your concern, would be expected to cooperate. Wouldn't, I mean, it isn't like a lawsuit, it isn't taking over your life, wouldn't have to retain an attorney. And I can't imagine why anyone would, they certainly would have that right to, but that isn't a requirement or contemplated by this level of investigation.
I just didn't volunteer for this job to subject myself to, like, unknown investigations.
Yeah.
That's kind of where I'm going from.
Yeah. Do we want to keep it there for now, and do we want to tinker with it? Do you want to all just have an opportunity to think about these last two? I can tell you that twenty-nine reflects the charter, but there's really nothing we're gonna be able to do to it. Only reason it's there is because, to distinguish it from censure, to make sure that you understand, council censure doesn't entail removal from office. The removal from office provision will reflect exactly what's in your charter.
To go back to where it's a question, is that twenty-two, is that in our charter as well?
It, so no, not at all. Censure isn't in the charter. It's the only remedy that would just, that's available to a council to do anything to one of its members. Whether it's here or not, you still are able to do that. So if say somebody was misbehaving and not following the rules, and the rest of the council wanted to know, what can we do? Carrie, tell us what we can do. I would just tell you, this is what you can do. That's right, yeah. But before you undertake that, I mean, nobody, what you don't like is the, what I don't like, is he said, she said. I saw this, I never posted that, you said this, I didn't say that, you're misunderstanding. That's where an investigation could be helpful, before a council implodes in finger pointing. And, so it's helpful to have sort of a neutral third-party recitation of, here's what happened, here's the reporter, investigator's summary at the end. Then the whole council can look at that and say, we're so sorry. Or, yeah, I, I thought that that was wrong, and my take is that violates Rule twenty-seven. Can we not violate Rule twenty-seven moving forward? That's what that would look like.
Mayor, Carrie, when you say the council has the inherent right, where, where is, like, I understand that you're referencing a remedy that we already have, whether it's in here or not, it doesn't give it teeth or not, but where, where is it written elsewhere?
It, a majority of the council, it's just the authority that a majority of the council would have. You have a lot of room to decide how to run the city and what to do with city resources. And that would be one of the things, it's ordered, you know, like, nobody said you have the authority to adopt rules necessarily, but you do. So, so if somebody is misbehaving and violating the rules that you have in place, they don't need to say, you get to call somebody out for violating them, but you do get to call somebody out for violating.
So, you favor coming back to it?
And just, the, the charter does give you the authority to adopt rules, which then is in turn authority to try to please adhere to those rules.
So if we were going to come back to it, would we require an additional work session? This is part of regular council business.
At your, whatever you direct is how I will handle it. What we could do is have this on an upcoming council agenda with everything finalized. And then realizing that we want to talk about proposed sections twenty-eight and maybe twenty-five, I'm not sure if we want to talk about that. But definitely twenty-eight, censure. And then, if you have the discussion, choose to move forward and adopt them, great, it could be set up for that action. We could even give you a copy with or without that section, just so you have that available. Okay.
With that, I will adjourn. For what session?
It's been a pleasure all, and I just want to thank you, I'm not staying in regular meetings. That's better than the Fox News. With that, I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Seven oh eight. Will the recorder please call the board?
Councillor here.
President.
Councillor Irvin.
Here.
Councillor Black. Councillor Merideth.
Here.
Councillor Savage.
Here.
Councillor Stenning.
Here.
Mayor Bulte.
Here. I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the line of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice pro.
Thank you. We added to the agenda, I see none. Appearance of interested citizens for items not on the agenda. This is a, this is a time for citizens' comment on items not listed on the agenda for a maximum of thirty minutes. Individual speakers must be recognized by the presiding officer, provide their name and address, and will be allowed up to three minutes or less with council approval. Comments regarding any matters scheduled for public hearing may be provided only at that hearing. Comments on agenda items may be taken prior to council discussion on that item. The council will not make any decisions based on public comment at this time. However, staff and council may choose to ask questions or comment following the conclusion of citizen comments. And there is no one signed up to speak. Public hearings, we have none. The second agenda. We have a motion with a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Resolutions and ordinances. Resolution demonstrating a commitment to support a grant application for Department of Interior National Park Service grant, the Paul Bruin Historic Revitalization Grant Program. Staff report by the city planner, Mr. Monka.
Good evening, thank you, Mayor and Council. The Department of Interior, the National Park Service is currently accepting applications for the Paul Bruin Historic Revitalization Grant Program. This program is an opportunity for certified local governments such as Cottage Grove in rural economic areas to bolster economic revitalization through grant-making. This grant is a super grant in that a successful grantee will become the grantor for the award monies to further then pass on to other grantees. If successful, the city would be in a position to disperse anywhere between two hundred thousand and seven hundred and fifty thousand for economic revitalization efforts aimed at econo, excuse me, aimed at economic revitalization, so basically our historic downtown district. Staff believes that we have a very strong application given the Main Street revitalization project and our existing historic facade renovation program. Staff will be requesting the maximum dollar amount of seven hundred and fifty thousand with the goal of keeping administrative costs below ten percent. That administrative cost will be split between grant management staff, planning staff, and finance staff as we manage to break the severance, if you will, moving forward. Staff did attach the flyer that comes along with the notice of funding opportunity. If you have any questions regarding that, I'd have to answer them. At this time, recommended by staff that the city council adopt the attached draft resolution demonstrating its support for the city's application of Paul Bruin Historic Revitalization Grant Program in the amount of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Councillor Stenning.
Thank you. You envision the process if we are successful to decide how to disperse the fund?
Mayor, Councillor Stenning, yes, so, as I mentioned, we already have a historic facade renovation program, grant program that the city operates annually, it's a ten thousand dollar fund, that is a one-to-one match. We would run it very similarly. There's some interesting caveats with this particular Paul Bruin grant in that we can't solicit it beyond saying the money's available. We can't have earmarked projects in our back pocket, right? So much like what we already have now, we advertise, we let people know what's potentially available, and then they have to come to us in order to do it. The nice part about the Paul Bruin grant, though, is there is no non-federal matching requirement. So an individual that wants to make a case that putting a new roof on their building and restoring the front facade will allow them to lease it out as a storefront, you get the benefit of preserving historic structure for economic revitalization purposes. And so where our current facade program would limit it to just the facade and require a match, this would allow for a larger building improvement, interior or exterior, as long as it's aimed at economic revitalization. So we're going to use a lot of the tools that we already have in our toolbox through the current facade program, but then have more capabilities moving forward.
We can see process for how it will continue to.
Mr. Monken, how soon do you think if you were to receive this grant that we would get it?
Mayor, I believe that we would probably here before the end of the federal fiscal, so September, end of September.
I need to state that I do commercial buildings downtown. I don't believe we will be applying for any of that. I need to declare that. Should I stand?
All right. Do we have an ordinance number for our resolution? Resolution 2128. 2128.
Mayor, move that the council adopt resolution 2128 using the draft resolution language contained in this item, demonstrating its support for the city's application for the Paul Bruin Historic Revitalization Grant Program in the amount of 750,000.
Second. We have a motion with the second. Will the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Merideth.
Aye.
Counselor Savage.
Aye.
Counselor Stenning.
Aye.
Counselor Irvin.
Aye.
Counselor Dyer.
Aye.
Upstain. Motion carries unanimous. Business from, thank you, Mr. Monken. Business from the City Council.
Mayor. It just occurred to me that my wife has some feather earrings she's selling in one of the shops downtown. Is that a thing? Okay.
I was just going to state that I believe actually probably in both of your cases, it would be a potential conflict of interest. At this point, the grant is simply just being applied for. It would be an actual conflict of interest if the grant was received and then moving forward and potentially applying for something. So in my opinion, you're probably won't find with.
But to declare that I have a potential conflict with this grant application.
I think it's always a good idea to get that on the record.
Yeah.
Item A, Bargain Department of Transportation, presentation of the Cottage Grove ADA Ramp Project. Staff report by Public Works, Mr. Bay Stewart.
Morning, Mayor, or good evening, Mayor and Council. Start over again. So in 2024, 25, the Oregon Department of Transportation will be upgrading the remaining ADA grant facilities along their roadways within city limits of Cottage Grove. This evening, we have Jenna Berman, ODOT Region Two Active Transportation liaison. She is here this evening to present information about the ADA ramp project, solicit comments, and answer questions from the City Council. ODOT is proposing changes to Highway 99 from Main Street to Fourth Street to improve safety for pedestrians and bicyclists using that section of Highway 99. And the ODOT presentation has been included in the package, and welcome Jenna this evening.
Thanks. I just looked at it on my phone and I think I saw a mistake, so I'm just going to apologize for that right now. But and we'll just, we'll have fun with it anyway. So, yeah, there is a mistake. Too many things at once. So my name is Jenna Berman. I do bicycle and pedestrian stuff. We call it active transportation now because it includes all kinds of things, not just people biking and walking. There's a lot of things out there now, right? Scooters, skateboards. Crazy little one-wheels. Sorry, I'm used to moving around. No problem. And so, yeah, so my work is called Active Transportation. You guys have been working on a bicycle and pedestrian plan that is citywide, which is awesome. But a lot of times what that means when you cover that big of an area is it doesn't hone in on and find the more specific solutions for the state system, because that takes some additional work, which means my engineers need to look at stuff and things like that. So this was a really great opportunity to kind of take what you had started with your bike ped plan and then pull out some of the things for 99 south of Main Street between Main Street and Fourth was my focus area and find some more specific solutions that can hopefully be added on to the ADA project that's coming. So that's why I'm here today, because there was an opportunity very timely to leverage that upcoming project. And so that's what I'm scurrying to try to do is find those solutions ahead of that project. So, so anyway, that's what we're going to be talking about today. And I'll try to make it kind of quick because I really wanted your input today. Because that section of roadway is pretty complex, to be honest. And a lot of your intersections are really complicated, and so I'm really hoping you can kind of help me out with some thoughts. So I call these little studies, they're like these little specific kind of studies for a segment of the state system, urban design verification, UDVs. You don't really need to memorize that or know it. You know, we're a state DOT, so we have to have a lot of acronyms, you know. So I had to make up my own acronym. So I'm going to talk about that today briefly, and then there's two different big things that we've been looking at with this work. And that is the striping on the road. What's the configuration of the roadway with the lanes, right? And then the crossings. And the crossings are the thing that is could happen sooner. And the the striping would have to happen after that. So the crossings are what I really wanted to get a little bit of input or thoughts later, you know, whatever works for you guys. So in that segment from of 99, so this is the state system, right? Between Main Street and Fourth, there are three big intersections that that we're looking at. And those are the ones that I'm going to show you a concept for today that I have and just kind of make sure that we're on point. And then I'm going to skip the next two slides because I blew it on those. But basically, I already told you what that's about, these urban design verifications. The whole point is to identify low-hanging fruit, low-cost bicycle and pedestrian or active transportation improvements that we can then leverage onto a project. One of the reasons why I was so motivated to do this segment of Cottage Grove is because it really rises up in our data. We have data for the whole state system that considers all kinds of things, like whether or not there's bicycle and pedestrian places to be today, whether it's a gap in the system, where there's destinations for people to bike and walk to and from, the socioeconomics, or there's like an equity score of the area. It kind of looks at all these different variables, where there's been crashes and where there's high risk for crashes. And when you put that all together, it generates a map and it shows me where the priorities are. And this is one of our really top priorities in our entire region, which for some perspective is about 100 communities, just so you know. So this one really rises up, which the good news is about that is it allows me to invest money in it. And there's a couple million dollars on the table that I'm hoping to spend here for these crossings. So really quick, the roadway reconfiguration, sometimes they're called road diets, but we try not to call them that because no one likes a diet and we want people to, you know, feel more positive about these. You guys already received one just north of this on town that's been completed recently. I drove through it today coming here. It looks awesome. I'm really excited about it. Looks like it's working well. There's already documented support. These things can be controversial, but there's already, it's already in your planning documents to continue that roadway reconfiguration in some way south of there. And so what we have been looking at is pulling out of your bike ped plan. So you've already seen this, so I'm going to be a little quick on this part. But we were thinking about a near-term and a long-term solution. So near-term, it would just be changing the striping. And it would be that top picture, which is from your bike ped plan already. And basically, what it would be is leaving the parking that's there today, which, by the way, is not very utilized. We've been like looking at that, but you know, it's there. Putting in bike lanes, buffered bike lanes, which means there's two stripes like you guys have on that new section instead of just one. It adds a little bit of protection, little visibility. And then have your through lane for the cars and then that existing, you already have a median, you know, in the middle, you already have that space. But long term, that's where the real potential is at, and that's going to take a lot more funding than I have today. So that's kind of the visionary on the bottom where, oh, wait, this is the near-term solution. I'm sorry, I just said that. Long term, the reconfiguration could be different. And that means you could build out that median in the middle to be 12 feet instead of six, which is what's there today. And it turns into both a median and a turn lane, so cars can turn in and make all those those left-hand turns if they're northbound. And and you have a vertically separated bike facility. So that's really what ups the ante for the bike facility design. And the reason why we look to do that, one, that's what our guidance tells us to do is because we know that only a small percent of the population is going to ride between a stripe and a bunch of cars, right? Really, you have to be a pretty confident, you know, cyclist. And when we build vertical separation between people driving and people riding, we get a lot more people riding. So that's the that's the long-term vision. So that's kind of been vetted by you guys pretty well. But I want to add to that that there's been, as part of our study, we were able to put some funding toward traffic analysis, which is what our engineers need to make sure that it works, right? So they basically look at all the intersections out there today. They do a 16-hour analysis. They look at who's turning, who is driving straight, what the demands are for all the turns. And so I have all that data now and we've looked at it and it's very viable. Like, it shows that if you change the configuration out there to be one lane in each direction and then you still have those little turns that people can make, it you wouldn't have a slowdown in vehicles, right? It works because you don't have super high volumes there. So I just wanted to share that with you. So for the near-term solution, just restriping, I have some ideas for the funding source, and I'm kind of thinking about that now. For the long term, it's big. It's the whole roadway would have to be taken down kind of to the bottom and built back up. And that's not something that we do very often these days. And so that's a very long-term, you know, we'll keep an eye out, but that's like a really big grant, right? Or a legislated, a legislated ask. So that's the update there. Again, those are some familiar things to you guys. So I was going to kind of move along into the crossing concepts because that's what I really hope to have you look at today. So some of my questions are, are the crossings in the right place? Where do people want to go? And and what are the essential turning movements for vehicles? So we take all of our standards and we go out there and we look at things and, you know, we look at where destinations are and we make our best guess based on what we think that we can do and a lot of safety, a lot of thought towards safety for people walking. And so that's what that's what our proposals kind of came out of. And so I'm going to work my way from from north to south. So this is the first concept for Washington to Ave. And gosh, I I want to like walk up there and point to things. This is a little hard for me to stand still. That's just so you know. But what you'll see in a nutshell is that we're looking at closing in that that corner. I'm trying to remember what was on that, what business is on that corner, but thank you, Les Schwab, closing that in. So it's not just a free-for-all of where people are driving, crossing, where people are walking, right? So defining that space is really important. And then you'll notice on the bottom, there's like a bump there. Those are called curb extensions, bulbouts. They have different names. It's all about shortening the crossing distance for pedestrians and putting them in a place where they're more visible for people driving. We maintain the parking. You get your bike lane and you still have that turn. There's still a turn lane in there so people can turn into the Les Schwab and get on to, is that Washington, Washington Ave? So that's the that's the concept for that one. Yes. I'm going to come back. Yep, yep.
Because, I mean, it's probably a lot of this, like, you go, you can't see anything, so then you go to the next language.
Yes. Yeah, no, that's it. That is a good question. Yeah, I think that you make sure that no one's crossing at the first location and then you creep forward. Yeah. Yeah, it's real weird. Your guys is skewed. I mean, the term basically is, you know, you have these skewed intersections that are really tricky and they're super hard for folks with like visual impairments or maybe in wheelchairs and things like that because you have all these roads coming together. But yes, it's a two-stage kind of situation, although there's not a stop required. So I think you just go slowly. Go slowly and make sure no one's crossing. It's a good question, though. This next one is is a little more a little more dynamic. Because of what I just described, where you have like three roads coming together and all these crazy angles, we just felt like this was unsafe for pedestrians to walk all the way across both Jefferson Ave and Seventh Street and 99, right? And so we actually closed it in. So that green, that green spot is closing in that that turn, that access point. And what I want you to know that we 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 use turning templates, they're called, to kind of make sure vehicles could still make it through that turn. But it does limit, right, one place, people turning left into Jefferson Ave. And so that would close in that really long, open convergence of three roadways. And it would hugely improve safety, but it would be a change, a change for the community. One of the things that we look at when we propose something like this is, one, I mean, it was really hard to find a safe place for someone to cross, period, without that, right? Because it was just open, just all through there, it was just open. So it's like, where do they land, you know? But we look to make sure that the that the grid of the local system very much allows for people to still get to all the places, right? And so that would be a limit to a turning movement to get to a safety, a safe crossing there. And the the last one is Quincy. This one feels really important, and I'll look to you to tell me whether or not I've got that right. But it's the one east-west connection that can cross over the railroad tracks and just kind of get to everything on the east end of town. So this one feels really important. Also, today, kind of the picture above is the picture today, and the picture down the bottom is the proposal. It's all just super open. There's just parking lots everywhere. And again, this convergence of three different streets. One of my engineers wanted me to come to you and ask about shutting this one off too. And I was like, I don't know if that's going to fly here, you know? So this was our proposal. And you'll notice that on the bottom there, there's like a really big curve that's built again that's kind of trying to to narrow the roadway or the sidewalks. It has this narrowing effect, which is a traffic calming, slowing people down when they're coming into town sort of concept, shortening the crossing distance for pedestrians. Because you'll notice this one's, you know, they're what? It's three lanes of traffic. And today it's five, six, two, five. And that's why you guys score so high on that map I was describing, because there's a really high risk because pedestrians have to just go over such a wide roadway. And so and then there'd still be a through lane. There would still be that left turn, but it would kind of close in, you know, those corners so that pedestrians had a path. Now, I will say that all that concrete work that you're seeing proposed, I don't know that I can get the ADA project to do all of that. I'm going to try. Like, or whatever our concept is that we land on, I'm going to try and leverage it as much as I can. But right now, that project is only required to address the ramps and do the ramps. So I might not be able to get all that sidewalk built in, so that might have to come later, but but that's the proposal. And then I got to tell you back at this next one real quick, and then I'm pretty much done. I'm at Madison Ave, and there's a signal here. So this is kind of back a little north of Quincy. There's a signal here, and and I took a picture of the insane, insanely long marked crosswalk for pedestrians. And I just, I have some ideas of what I would like. And I just, I have some ideas of what I would like to try to get the ADA project to do here, to shorten that crossing distance, and maybe restripe it and bring that long thing down a little bit, but I just wanted to kind of ask you while I had the chance in front of you today, if you knew, if you had a sense of, do you think people are more likely to cross on the south side of that versus the north side, and if you had any ideas? I have funding, I'm focused on those three other ones that I showed you, but I'm still gonna try and get something done here if I can. So I think that's pretty much it. Real quick, I think all that's left, oh, and so, I'm coming to you first. We've spent a lot of time already internally with my engineers and with the consultant team to get to these concepts, like I said, they're complex. So I'm coming to you first, and then we were gonna make any tweaks that we needed to do that, and we're gonna go out to the public, so we're here tonight, I know, I'm impressed, by the way, with how many people you have here. I present to city council all the time, and I never had this many people. And then I'm going to the freight industry, because I have to kind of run it by them, even though this isn't a major freight route, which is good, that makes it easier for me to do some good things for safety. And then we were gonna go to some in-person events, too, to get some more feedback from the public. And then after that, we kind of wrap it up, and then I jump on that ADA project and try and get them to do as much as, as much as I can for the community. So that's the plan. Any quick, any quick thoughts? I'm gonna try and take some notes.
Thank you so much for coming.
Yeah.
I get kind of excited, I really dig your passion.
I get excited, too, obviously.
Yes, that's exciting. My concern, in your first visual, you had no vertical separation.
Correct.
In the second one, you did, which then removes the parking. So I just want to clarify that we have parking, but in the, later down the road, you're removing that park.
Yes, yes, and that's an important distinction, and one of the reasons why is because the early, the early, the near-term solution is just striping, and that leaves room, since all we can do is stripe, we're not gonna build concrete and stuff like that, it leaves room to maintain that parking. Long term, if you really want to build the types of bike facilities that we're supposed to be building based on the speeds and the volumes of traffic, you'd have a vertical separation. We also did some analysis around the parking availability through this corridor, and the utilization rate on the highway, and it's very low, and there's a ton of off-street parking available. So our hope was, when we got to that point, there'd be, you know, that support. But, you know, I'd be curious if you think that that's...
My pushback is, I personally don't like to park there, because people are going too fast. And so if we create those visual striping barriers, like you're talking about, that's gonna be really awesome. So we are gonna give people parking safer.
Yeah, that's a good point.
A little frustrating, because you're right, it is not utilized right now.
Yeah, it's not.
Because it's...
Yeah.
So to give it and then take it away hurts a little, because we are...
Yeah. That's a good point. I mean, another way to go would be to put up vertical elements to redo that near-term solution, and, you know, take out the parking now, and try and use that space, but there's so much space out there when you remove through lane for cars, that it's almost hard to stripe it in a way that will keep drivers out of it, if that makes sense. There's like, almost too much space without the vertical element. But I'm gonna think about that some more, because that is a really good point.
I know, I know that we need parking. If we can create parking that feels safer, that would be utilized, it would bring business to some of those businesses that are right there on the line.
Yeah, yeah.
It would be really helpful. It would hurt me to give it.
And then take it away. Okay, yeah, no, that's a good point. Thanks.
Thank you. More robust striping on the bicycle lanes there, wouldn't that increase field safety and parking density? And I think you see, you have a lot of long intersections, a lot of crossings, etc., every time, each time, like, we are going, taking half, traveling.
Right. Did it would improve safety? Sorry, I'm not quite getting it.
But if you're crossing, like, at Quincy, where you gotta cross four lanes, you gotta cross the road that comes across, how do you...
Yes.
You're only crossing 99, you're crossing two lanes.
Yes.
I don't know about that question, it just seems like...
Yes, it improves safety, yes, quite a bit. Like, your risk goes down a lot, especially in that scenario where like, one person stops, it's called the double, you know, anyway, one person stops for a pedestrian, the other person doesn't, because they don't see them. So when you go down to one lane in each direction, there's huge safety benefits.
Quincy is particularly dangerous, it sounds to me particularly important.
Okay.
See, they have a pretty good sort of holdout.
Yes. Yes.
That's the thing, crossing each way to the west, still have, crossing 99, you still have the call.
Yeah. Right, that's why we wanted to kind of define that sidewalk and that corner, yeah. So does this seem, in general, this seems on point to you?
It seems safe.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, 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 yes, it is. Good, well, that's good to know.
Yeah, I would definitely echo both of those sentiments, and that a lot of the reason why we're not parking along there is because it's a drag strip.
Yeah.
And, so, yeah, you don't want to get clipped getting out, you know, just looking by Ferguson's. That's one of those spots that it's always like, really nerve-wracking, opening the door.
Yeah.
I do like the sidewalk designs and whatnot. For me and my little family, a lot of, a lot of the struggle would have been alleviated with the ADA ramps, because it's like, you're booking it across the longest crosswalk in the state. And then you might be on a little, like a Strider bike, and then some little kid has to navigate, like, hopping up the curve.
Right, right.
So even like, shoot, getting across dramatically improves by not having to jump up a curve, or trip and fall over.
So just the ramps will be a big improvement from that.
Yeah, big improvement on that. And then, when you were talking about money, I was having a lot of wild ideas. But some of them being, like, I always think of that, the south end of town, it's like, you're entering in, you just come up through one of the most beautiful areas in Oregon, through the curves of, you know, Elkhead.
Yes.
And you get off the exit to Cottage Grove. And it, it's a little disappointing, like, it doesn't represent how cool this town is. But like, so, thinking along the terms of like, coming into Cottage Grove from the south, and, you know, there's a little skate park there that could use some improvement. I was thinking of driving through Canada one time, and one of these places has like, the most giant fly fishing rod, you know?
Yeah.
As part of their little thing, but it got me thinking.
They're shtick, I'm a fly fisher person, so I'm into it. Yeah, totally.
It's out there, right?
Yeah.
And, so, I don't know how this works.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's called a gateway treatment. And I agree with you, and I think one of the beauties of a gateway treatment is, is it can, and that's a little outside of the scope of this, but it's related, because what that does is it welcomes you, you know you've entered an urban space, and it helps with that whole traffic calming feeling, where they're like, okay, I have now entered a town, and that means that there's gonna be people moving around in different ways. And so it's really a safety thing to have a gateway treatment, and I don't know if we've ever talked about that, Faye, but you certainly can, can do that, and the best thing to do is do it outside of ODOT right-of-way. Just realized I'm being recorded, but outside, and a lot of communities do them, but you do it just outside of our right-of-way, so you don't have to deal with our standards, and you can kind of do what you want. So that's a really neat project to think about.
Because there's that, on the east side of town, right there, I believe that there is that cross section that is ODOT.
Yes.
It's kind of like no man's land, flat, that would be that perfect place to set up that gateway. So I guess, you know, if there's interest in that, I think, enhancing, for all the safety reasons and other reasons.
Yeah, identity, safety, absolutely, yep.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, Councilor, and I'd just like to share that we have actually approached ODOT in trying to purchase that little area just south of the skate park, because it is, appears to be surplus, and I think they're considering that. The other thing I would share is that Ms. Berman is just absolutely correct, it only took about four years to get permits to rebuild that entrance sign that had been there before exactly the way it was. So it takes a long time, and you might remember that sign was all broke down like there's Scotty here, and that was a wonderful entrance into our community with the broken sign, so...
I just want a huge covered bridge coming into town, like, I think that, I like... That'd be sweet.
Crosswalks, what if you did the archway of like, the covered bridge?
Yeah, yeah, like this. That would be a very unique, yeah, thing. Anyway, sorry, I should call you Mr. Stewart, you can tell. Yeah, just have it land outside of ODOT right-of-way on either side.
Yeah.
But these things are possible, they really are. I mean, I joke about our bureaucratic process, it's a process, but there's a way forward. Yeah. Yeah.
I think, thank you, I think the moving safety here can kind of at least indirectly also...
Yes. Yes. I know we're gonna run out of time pretty quick, but I want to follow up on something that Councilor Savage said, so that the city staff and I can both hear it. One option for that issue, I think, that you brought up, of one version that leaves on-street parking, and another version that takes it away long-term, and could that cause issues in the community? We could redraw and reconcept the near-term solution that I brought up, and so, you see that bottom one, I think it's easier to see, there's eight feet of parking on either side. I mean, there is a possibility, it would take some, some work, Mr. Stewart, I'm looking at the back of your head, just so you know. With vertical, they have these like, vertical delineators, they're called, or tubular markers, sometimes people call them candlesticks, they have a lot of names. And you can, between paint, you know, and those, you could really try to demarcate that space and make it just for bikes, and steer people toward those off-street parking spaces now, of which there is numerically plenty. But, you know, a lot of people like to pull up right in front of businesses, and this is always a challenge for my work, because I'm always advocating for bike facilities, saying, hey, people have a right to ride to these places, too, right? So we could redraw something, if you were interested to see what that could look like, I'd have to, and bring it to you before we go to the public, or we could present two different things for that near-term solution, one without the on-street parking and one with it. I don't know, I'd be curious to know what you think about that.
I was born and raised here, but I, and so I am very used to driving and navigating our crazy intersections, and, but I've often thought, people that are not from here and new to town, how difficult knowing how to get through them could be. But I can say, disclosure, business owner, that I appreciate parking in front of my business, and I can tell you, business owners will push back on that, if you try to pull their parking that's in front, because people, you think that they're not gonna have a problem walking a little bit, but a lot of times they will bypass a business if they have to park off-street. So I would have a hard time taking away their parking. And then I, also, the long-timers in Cottage Grove may even push back on cutting it down to one lane, and you're probably gonna find that.
Sure.
I understand the safety of that, and can appreciate that, but I do think you're probably gonna feel a little pushback on that as well.
Yeah, there's always some, I mean, you can never make everyone happy, right? But it is in your transportation system plan, and it's now in your bike pet plan, and so, you know...
But the parking is still something that we can...
Yeah, that's right, that's right, like, the general concept is sort of adopted in your transportation system plan, right? So there's that general support for it, but then the actual drawing, you know, the configuration, what that really means on the ground is what hadn't been figured out yet. So I was trying to get close to that, and the reason why is because then the city can look for funding to do it. Or I have some money, I mean, I'll just admit, I have some money, some bike pedestrian money, and this corridor is on the top of my list, right? So I'm ready to pay for it potentially, if we get to the right solution for the near-term. I can't pay to redo your whole road, don't have that much.
Thank you, Mayor. If I could respond, just to be very clear, I'm advocating for parking.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
I'm not advocating to remove it now to make it easier, I'm advocating for keeping the parking.
Yes.
But making it safer, so that people can be on the action.
I see, well, yes. And I think that this would get to that, yes, sorry if I misunderstood that, yes, that's helpful. And I think that this would help with that, you're gonna have one lane of traffic to your left, so that's gonna feel safer, and between you and the traffic, there's gonna be six, seven, eight feet of a bike lane, without constant bikes, right? You know, hopefully we get more, right? But it's not like, constant like, traffic. And so there's gonna be this buffer for the parking zone as well. And so I do think that this design concept, that near-term, will feel more comfortable. And that's a really interesting point, and maybe we'll see more people using the on-street parking. And then, long-term, we'll be like, this really matters, we want to keep it there. Yeah.
Yeah, clarity, was, all this looks like fresh concrete in the sidewalks along, along there. Has there been thought given to even just expanding the width of those sidewalks? Because I, I think a lot of the bike movement, maybe it's just because of the road configuration, does happen on sidewalks.
Yeah, that's a great question, yeah.
And I know we're, plan is to widen the sidewalks, you know, downtown, bikes aren't allowed downtown, but like, I think that goes to maybe the population here, and we want to change more travel habits, but I think you're gonna find the safest feeling for people most of the time, because there's not a ton of foot traffic on these sidewalks to ride on the sidewalk.
Yeah, right, and we see that a lot, and in a corridor like this, we see it even more, because there's actually not bike facilities. This literally is a gap in the bike system, right? You don't have bike facilities on this section of roadway right now, there's zero, that's why I rise this up so high on my list, right? And so, because it would fill a big gap. And so, people aren't supposed to ride on the sidewalk, just so you know, we see it plenty, and I definitely am not against it, especially people riding with kids. We're not supposed to ride on the sidewalk, and it's actually statistically more dangerous, because there's all the driveways that are crossing the sidewalks, and people aren't looking for people on bikes coming both ways. You only look one way, and you wait to make your turn, and then you make your turn, and if someone's crossing and a bike coming the other way, right? So statistically, it's not. Where we see people riding on sidewalks the most, I mean, there's a lot of education that's missing, but is where it doesn't feel safe to be in the road. So my hope would be that once we got at least a buffered bike lane through this corridor, and one lane of traffic to sort of contend with, that you'd see more people using the bike lane and not being on the sidewalk. And then, so that's the idea. Real quick, the standard sidewalk width is six feet, that's our standard, and so that's probably what would get built out there with our project.
Which is probably wider than we have now.
I mean, eight's awesome, like, in a downtown, usually we try and go for like, eight feet, because there's way more pedestrians, but in this kind of corridor, this... But in this kind of corridor, this kind of urban mix is what we call it. You know, it's it's like six to eight. And the ADA program is really focused on just the ramps. I won't be able to get them to make wider sidewalks. Yeah, but that's a great question.
Yeah, I'm the biker of the group here. I do on that section of 99 use the sidewalk. And our code does allow it. It's only.
It does. Oh, good to know.
It's only permit for mid prohibited in the downtown corridor. But everywhere else you can ride on sidewalks. It does feel much safer there. I just assume cars are going to hit me, so I'm looking out.
Yeah.
And they do occasionally.
Right, right. You just know to look both ways, get eye contact and all that. Yeah, no, for sure. And I mean, the reason why sidewalks feel safer is because there's a vertical, there's a vertical difference separating you from the vehicles, right? So that's what long term, that type of bike facility with a vertical difference in between the two is what our guidance is actually. ODOT's guidance right now would be that. A vertical, it's called a tier, we call it a tier one facility where there's some vertical element between the cars and the cyclists. And that's where, that's when you'll really start to see more people choosing to ride. But long term, that's a real expensive project, right? So trying to get there incrementally. What are some near term things we could do now to maybe make it more comfortable for some people? Totally good if you're still on the sidewalk. Yeah.
Yeah, just one last comment. I think this is beautiful when you have that vertical separation. I think it's gorgeous.
Yeah.
My fear is we have businesses that are really important on those.
Absolutely. Right. Yeah.
Their cars, I mean, otherwise they're parking across street, a long number.
Yeah.
Couple blocks down. There's a private parking lot, so you can't park there unless you're actually visiting that location. You can't go a block down.
Right, right. There's an amazing number. We did do the data collection on the number of parking spots off-street. There is a lot down there. But you're right, it doesn't mean that there's a parking lot for every single business. And that really is kind of what what comes into play. You know, that said, I mean, one of the things that we're learning is is that the more people move around, the healthier we are as a community, right? So it's really, I mean, in the end, it really comes down to like, are people willing to walk a little bit to get a much more comfortable roadway that will allow people to choose biking and walking maybe a little more instead of just being able to drive to the very front door of every single business, right? It's a it's a it's a choice for the community to make long term. You don't have to do it yet, right? But I mean, it's it's really something to think about. The city of Yahad, if you've been out there, they just did a big sidewalk project. And that was very controversial. They were closing in a lot of some of that just pole-in parking that everyone had because to build the sidewalks, you were just, you couldn't back out, right? There wasn't enough room. There was a lot of controversy around it. And then in the end, man, I mean, everyone's just walking everywhere. They just park, they leave their cars and they just walk, right? So it did work out, but it is always going to be tension around this. It's a trade-off, right? So I appreciate that for sure. So we're not doing this yet, just so you know. But but I hear you on the parking. And so I think that, I mean, I think what I'm hearing from you is that 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 near term solution that maintains parking and adds those buffered bike lanes, knowing that the reconfiguration can work and stuff like that feels okay for you to put out to the public. Presenting this as a potential long term solution, that was my thought. And to be like, this would take a lot of funding. I mean, this is a very long term. And it would take more public engagement. Maybe we add a note there that says this would involve a lot of funding and more public outreach or something. Would that feel? Yeah. Oh, we that's, yeah, that's, yeah. You guys have a concrete road out there, so that's complex. Not even asphalt. It's panels of concrete. So, yeah, cool. And the crossings, it sounds like you all felt relatively cool.
There's one thing on that I didn't mention. You meant you asked on the north or the south crossing of Sixth Street.
Oh, yeah, that, the mystery crossing that I don't know what to do.
We, my family, we find ourselves in kind of intuitively wanting to cross on the north side, even though we've lived here a long time now. And we're like, oh, yeah, I gotta go down the south side. So I would say the north side makes more sense for like where you want to travel to restaurants.
Thank you.
If you pull up to the middle of Sixth Street to take a left on Sixth Street. So if you thought if you're the turning and you're turning, then what if somebody's crossing? Somebody goes around you. I think that's going to create more visual impairment for pedestrians or drivers who lead pedestrians. But if they're on the north side, if somebody eats cross, they're already turning.
Yeah, or yes, exactly. Our big concern was on the top, so that's the South Lay where that big crazy long crossing is, was that if we straightened that crossing out and kind of made it more perpendicular, that the the cars coming off of the side shoes, I think is what you were just saying, are going to come around fast and not recognize that pedestrians might be crossing there. And so.
That is a that is a hazard because that's that's a lot of time. Quick glance of left, nobody's coming. You make it onto head north on 99. But if you did modify that corner right there in the northeast corner, that would give pause to, you know, still turn. But that would that would be helpful.
Yeah. So you're you're talking about that north side, which is the bottom, the bottom picture is the north side.
Yeah, the other, the other issue, though, is as it continues on East, Southeast on Sixth, it runs into the railroad and there's no sidewalk along there. And it's it's not easy access. And that could really be improved to Bohemia Park. People are walking from Bohemia. You know, you're tempted to want to cross the railroad tracks.
Yes.
Through a parking lot.
Yes.
Kind of thing.
Yeah.
As a shortcut. So, you know, I don't know how far back into there you can go.
Not very. I have to stay in ODOT right of way, but then. That's where my money can work. Yeah, no, but that's a good point. I saw that connection. I also wonder if a good crossing there is going to like lead people over the railroad tracks. But that's a that's a whole nother issue. So thank you for that feedback. That's helpful. I'm going to take that back. And, you know, I just, I wanted to mention really quickly because you guys are, I'm just like really appreciating your level of comprehension, your conversation. But that yellow, that yellow spot in the middle of that crossing, that marked crossing there, that's a pedestrian refuge island. You guys have one on your new section of roadway. I want you to know that is the number one safety. We call them our safety countermeasures, which is super wonky. But just to say that with all the bells and whistles, yeah, the stripes, the lights, the flashing lights, the signs, that island is the thing that makes it the most safe statistically for pedestrians. So anytime we can get those pedestrians islands in there, that's the number one thing. It also makes you more eligible for funding when those are involved, right? And so we could fit one here because we closed off that left turn, you know, so we could get an island in there. So that was one of the reasons why closing that down. Whereas, you know, the other solutions at Quincy, for example, sorry, I went too far again. But anyway, we couldn't get the pedestrian island in there because we knew we should maintain that turning movement. And so that's the trade-off. All of these, all these decisions are trade-off talks, right? And and show the community really, you know, your goals as a community is what really drives sort of where we come down on the design, right? So so anyways, okay. If nothing, I know I'm way over time probably, but I love the questions and comments. Thank you. And if anything super scares you or super excites you later and you want to let me know, Mr. Stewart has my contact information.
Thank you, Jen.
Okay, yeah, thanks you guys very much.
Eva Cuba Libre.
All right. Item B, annual police chief report, sub report by Police Chief Cory Chase. It is beautiful, by the way.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Yeah, am I good to go? Okay. Okay, so first of all, I just completed month five with the city of Cottage Groves, the chief of police. So we're doing an annual report. And what I wanted to do is is kind of for for myself and for the department and then also for the city to kind of just start doing some benchmarking and see where we are and start pulling some statistical data and getting an idea of what it looks like now, doing kind of a comparison and look back to 2022 and 23, and then help us with our internal goal setting and looking at where we want to go moving forward into 2024. So so we put together this report. And I skipped through, you guys all have a copy of it right there. So I'm from you. So we printed off a copy for you. And I'm going to spare the public from having to go through page one of this. So this is going to be published online, so they'll all be able to see this, by the way. So but I wanted to present it to all of you tonight and have a chance to talk to you. But this this part right here, I am going to go through because this was something that a project that I initiated when I first got here and was talking to the staff and engaging them about where we're going and and what our department's going to look like in the future. And for us, I didn't want to move forward without some some clear core values and identify who we are as a police department and what it means to be a police officer, not just to be a law enforcement officer, but what does it mean to be a Cottage Grove police officer? And how do we serve the community? So I'm going to go over this because this is the first time that we're that we're sharing this with the public as well. So every member of the department was engaged in this process. I made it mandatory. They all had to respond back and give me feedback as we worked through this process. But so at the Cottage Grove Police Department, we're guided by a firm commitment to upholding the highest standards of service, empathy, integrity, and courage in all our interactions with the community we serve. These core values serve as the foundation of our mission, and we pledge to uphold them with unwavering dedication. So for service, we're dedicated to serving and protecting our community honorably and respectfully while responding to their needs and being a reliable source of support and safety. And empathy, we actively listen to, understand, and show compassion in all our interactions, working to de-escalate and remove barriers while providing support to those in need. And integrity, we uphold the highest ethical standards, maintaining transparency, accountability, and consistency in our actions, always acting with honesty and fairness. And courage, we have the courage to face difficult and dangerous situations, making tough decisions when necessary to protect and serve our community and standing up for what is right, even in the face of adversity. These core values are the pillars of our department and the guiding principles that inform our actions and decisions. We will constantly strive to improve, learn, and grow in our pursuit of service, empathy, integrity, and courage. Our unwavering commitment to these values ensures that the Cottage Grove Police Department will continue to be a beacon of trust and state safety in our community, working tirelessly to make it a better place for all. So that was something that I felt was important for us to identify and to recognize and to kind of create an identity for us moving forward as as we are looking at how we're going to build our police department and maintain and grow in years to come. So with that, I will click forward to what our current department structure looks like. So this is our org chart today, and this is what it looks like. These positions don't represent everything that's full. This is what we're what we're budgeted for. We currently, when I came here, we had about 45% of these positions were vacant. So we are working really hard to fill those positions. I've been working with Mandy Beeler in our HR department to kind of reevaluate our hiring process and how we recruit, how we push people through, or how we can get them through the testing and evaluation and the backgrounds and the psychological. And there's all of those components that go into hiring police officers and dispatchers. So we've been able to move forward. We've hired a lot of people. Last meeting, you had Captain Marsh here swearing in several new employees. We have a couple more positions that we have that we're looking to fill soon. So we have people in various stages of the hiring process for dispatch and for a police officer right now. And very soon, we'll be recruiting for sergeants so we can fill out some of these personal supervisor positions, which are extremely critical to being able to accomplish our mission. So this just kind of represents our budget for 21, 22, and the 22, 23 fiscal years. And really, this is just kind of a representation of, you know, what are, again, what our sworn and non-sworn personnel are. The total department personnel, which has gone down a little bit from previous years, but also just, you know, it looks like a standard, you know, police department budget where personnel costs are about 85.5% of our overall budget. So and I just thought that was a good representation in a graphic that we could share with the community so they can kind of understand where those dollars are going to. So as we move through this and we look at our calls for service, this talks a little bit about, you know, what calls for service are. And it's all, so it's not just when somebody calls into the police department and requests a police officer through 911 or non-emergency. Calls for service are also reflective of self-initiated activity for our police officers. So as we move through this report, you'll kind of see a common theme where our staffing levels and being at the at the staffing, you know, crisis as it was when I got here, how that kind of impacted our our level of service and and our calls for service or self-initiated activity and also our traffic enforcement efforts. So these are the different call types. So this is just kind of represent represents some of the most frequent calls that we go to. If you notice at the top, there were, you know, the total incidents calls that that we went to is down significantly from 22 to 23. And again, that goes back to not necessarily the calls that are coming into the police department, but it's the ability to do those self-initiated things where we're being more proactive and not just a reactive police force. So obviously, as things unfolded through 22, 23, and our staffing levels dipped to where they were, where sometimes we had one officer on for an entire 12-hour shift, we didn't have a lot of self-initiated activity. There's not a lot of traffic enforcement that's going to happen when that's going on. You're simply being reactive to those calls that come in. So so those calls are going to go down. When you look at the types of calls as you go through this list, there's not a lot of huge fluctuations. So and again, this is just a two-year look at the data. So my intent moving forward is to build on this every year and eventually get to a point where we have five years worth of data that we can compare to. We continue to have a role in five years of data. But this was just something, like I said, for benchmarking to and to kind of let us know where we stand today and what we can focus on moving forward. The case numbers by year, again, you know, the case numbers, as you see, there's a decline by by a couple thousand case numbers from 22 to 23. And and so there's several things that can impact that as well. One is what are we taking case numbers for? So when you, when I, when an officer goes to a call, that that call type and that incident can be captured in our computer automated dispatch, which is CAT. So it can be captured in in there. But then also they can draw a case number, write a police report. Not everything rises to the level of needing to write a police report. So what we've tried to do is create some efficiencies and really taking case numbers and writing police reports on those incidents that need a full narrative and all the information captured in a police report to help free up some of our officers' time so they're not spending all of their time in the office doing paperwork and they can be out being more visible and proactive in the community. So and then again, that coupled with the decrease in self-initiated activity that we saw through throughout the year can can kind of show why there's a contrast there because the officers aren't out doing the self-initiated things that they had in the past and the luxury of being able to do that. So. So I went, we went through and put some data in here on on NiBRS, which is the National Incident-Based Reporting System. The FBI tracks all the prime statistics around the country from from the various police and sheriff's offices. So this just kind of shows, again, kind of goes back to what what I drew from this was a lot of the decline we saw in calls for service, how we captured that in our case numbers was mostly self-initiated stuff. But when you look at the crimes being reported, there's not a lot of, there's not a really large dip in that. So we're still taking those calls for service. And if you flip through to this page here, page 10, this this kind of breaks down the call, the specific call data. And it breaks it down into Group A and Group B criminal activity. So when we look at some of the more major crimes, when you look at aggravated assault, for instance, you know, things like that, and you can go through, you know, simple assaults or thefts of vehicles. There's nothing really in here when you go through this where there's where there's something that really jumps off the page. One of the things that that we do look at is if you look at thefts, you know, there's a, there's a increase in thefts from 22 to 23. But overall, things as you go through these numbers, they they haven't really changed. There's something that really jumps off the page. This next page is just an opportunity for us to kind of show our arrest, our arrest data, the number of arrests that we're making, adults and juveniles. And so it kind of, it kind of shows you month to month. As you read through this report and you see the the cases or the calls for service by month, you can see. and you see the, the cases or the calls for service by month, you can see the number of arrests also that are being made month to month in twenty-twenty-three. This, this page I thought was, was important because it's not something that we enjoy talking about, but I think it's important. But it does show that, you know, we, we do investigate reports of child abuse, and there's a couple of ways that that happens. We can get those calls for service that come into the police department, or we can get cases that are reported to us from the Department of Human Services and Child Welfare. So in, in the state of Oregon, we're required to cross-report. So when cases come into DHS, they report to us, and when we get cases, we report to them. So both agencies have their eyes on, on these cases. So these are some of our most sensitive cases, and our officers have done a really good job in the absence of having a full-time detective unit to help with these, with these investigations. But these are highly specialized cases, and there's been one case since I got here where the information that came in, when I evaluated it and reviewed it, I just didn't feel like we had the level of training and experience within our department to be able to take on the lead role in that investigation. So we did reach out to our partners at the state police, and they were able to assign a detective out of Salem to partner with one of our officers. It was a great learning experience for them, but it was a very complex case, and it was something that, you know, we just don't have that in our department right now, and that's what we're building towards because we do need to be self-sufficient in that way. We, we do need to rely on our partners, you know, from time to time, but, but we need to get to a position where we have that position filled in our department. So this is why, because we are, you know, twenty-four cases in, in twenty-three and twenty-seven, twenty-two, that are very highly sensitive cases. Traffic. This is one of the ones where, when we do look at the numbers, they are going to jump off the page at you. And so, and we recognize that when I looked at these numbers, I was, you know, I wasn't totally surprised because I know what it takes to be able to get out there and be proactive, right? Because traffic is normally one-hundred percent proactive policing. And again, when, when your numbers are as low as what ours were, it's really challenging for them to get out there in between their calls for service and, and the reports that they're taking, the higher level cases, the felony cases and things like that that are very labor-intensive, it doesn't leave a lot of time in the day to go out and be proactive and do traffic enforcement. So I've, I've been talking to the captains about this, Captain Marsh and I've had discussions about this. We've been talking to the department about as we start to staff up, which we are, we're seeing some relief finally in our staffing numbers, that our focus needs to be back out there doing traffic enforcement. It's a really important part of our, of our job. It helps to keep the community safe, and we just had a presentation talking about, you know, pedestrian safety, bike access, and vehicle traffic and everything else. This is a piece of that as well. So our traffic stops were down significantly in twenty-three from twenty-two, and then you can see there's a direct correlation where our traffic crashes actually went up. So, so stops are down, citations are down, and crashes are up. So that's something that, as we talk about as a department, those numbers we need to flip for twenty-four, right? We need to see the traffic stops up, we need to see the citations up, and we need to see that crash number go down. So that's, that's what our goal is in, in twenty-four. So when we look at this, we did a comparison to twenty-two and twenty-three, and there's one month on here, it looks like April of twenty-two, where it really kind of jumps off the page if there's a bunch of traffic stops. I've talked to a couple of different officers, and I said, what'd you guys do in twenty-two, April twenty-two? Some like, you know, some traffic safety blitzes, and, and they couldn't really remember, but, but there's just different reasons for that. So we, we have some traffic safety grants that we applied for, that we have this year. But again, most of those traffic safety operations are run on overtime, they're extra duty. We were already working our officers' twelve-hour shifts, and then they're, you know, they're, sometimes those twelves are turning into six-teens and they're doing those multiple days in a row. They're not too excited to volunteer to come in and do some, you know, some more overtime on top of that. They just, they just want a day off. They just want to sleep, or they just want to, you know, hang out with their family. So we're hoping that as, as, you know, our staffing numbers increase and things kind of level out, that we're going to offer up these overtime opportunities. And, you know, because what, what traditionally happens is, you know, when there's too much overtime that's, that's mandatory, then, you know, the officers aren't happy with that. But as soon as all of that dries up and, and the overtime's not there, they're kind of like, wait, it's kind of nice to get that routine once in a while. So, and, and the nice thing about the traffic grants is that that's grant funding that pays for that overtime. So, and it's specific to traffic safety enforcement. So we have speed enforcement grants, pedestrian safety grants, we can do DUI enforcement, distracted driving, safety belt, all of those that, that we apply for and then manage the, the time for those grants. So, and Captain Marsh is managing those right now. So, so we're, we're hoping to see some increases in that data too. And again, this is more traffic data, and, you know, these are kind of the most common things as you look at these. If you go to a traffic crash as a police officer and you're doing an investigation, the chances are pretty good that one of these violations that you see on there are, are going to kind of come to surface during the course of the investigation of the accident. So when you see those numbers down as much as they are from twenty-two to twenty-three, it's not surprising to me that, that the crashes went up in twenty-three as opposed to twenty-two. So, and then this with, with dispatch, this just kind of talks a little bit about our South Lane nine-one-one. We did some significant upgrades this year, and I, I think you guys were all aware of the project that we did there with the, the funding that we got through the Office of Emergency Management that's, that's funded through the state's nine-one-one tax. And so we upgraded, we moved down the hallway into a new room that's a little bit more private and conducive to focusing on dispatching for nine-one-one services. And then we upgraded our nine-one-one capabilities. So, and so when you look at twenty-two to twenty-three, our nine-one-one calls actually went up. So, but then again, you know, your total calls are down because that's where that self-initiated calls for service is factored into that total call number. So, so we're seeing a slight increase in calls to nine-one-one, but overall, calls that are captured are down. We wanted to give you just kind of a snapshot of what records and evidence does, and, and this is for you and the community as well, just so they can kind of understand what we do. We added a graphic in there that, that kind of shows the, the prescription drug take-back program that we have, where we have the Dropbox in our, in our lobby there, and just the, the weight in twenty-twenty-three is we, is, you know, all of that stuff is, is taken out and it's weighed and, and accounted for, and then it's all destroyed when we take it to the incinerator to, to destroy it all. So it's a great service that we're able to offer the community instead of, you know, doing like an annual or, or, you know, monthly drug take-back program. We have an ongoing, you know, prescription drug take-back program where people can come in and dispose of those things in our Dropbox in the lobby. So, so now, some of the fun stuff. We brought on Fuji this year, and everybody loves Fuji. So she does an amazing job just being here every day, and, and her presence has, has been huge in the department. So she's a morale booster inside the department, and she's a hit literally everywhere she goes. So we had her at Coffee with the Cop last week. We had her here for the, the chamber after hours, business after hours. She's been, she goes around to these different events, and, and she's just kind of one of those things where people are drawn to her, and she's a conversation starter, and also just kind of puts people at ease, and, and, and it helps with our officers too. So if they're having, you know, a stressful day, or they've gone to a stressful call, they come back to the department, you know, you walk in and you see this face, it's, your, your mood can change pretty quick. So, so K-9 Rip is our patrol K-9. He is not the life of the party, so he's not the one that we snuggle up to in the hallway at all, but he's very good at what he does. So we just kind of wanted to talk a little bit about K-9 Rip in here and give a little description. And next year, our plan is to be, once we have him here for a year, we're going to have some data that we're going to provide as far as, you know, his training hours and his deployments and capture of some assists to other agencies and things like that, so we can see, you know, a little bit more about what, what Rip does throughout the year. So, so our, oops, too far. New hires in twenty-twenty-three, you know, we added, we added a few new faces in twenty-twenty-three, including our, our pets up there. One pet, one officer dog. So, and I think next year, when we present for twenty-twenty-four, it's going to be even more than that. So, which, which again, it's, I'm glad we're hiring and getting things up to speed. It does kind of emphasize where we were though, and it kind of shows the deficit we were in when it comes to personnel. We handed out some awards in twenty-twenty-three, and this just kind of highlights a few of those. Some officers achieved their certifications, different certification levels, basic certification from one of our officers in twenty-twenty-three, and a lifesaving award that was given out prior to me starting here. And then just some of the community engagement things that we've done, which is, I've been emphasizing this a lot with the team beyond, you know, the, the traditional duties that we do to be out there and engaging with the community and different things. And a lot of these things that you see don't take a lot of time. So it, it just takes a little bit of our time, and that goes a long way. So, you know, we can, we can have a coloring contest, and we can celebrate, you know, a couple of kids and, and recognize them and let them come down and meet some of our officers. Mayor, you know, you and I were at the Kindness Assembly at Lincoln Middle Square earlier in, or later in twenty-twenty-three, which has turned into a monthly thing for me. I was just there again this morning, issuing a kindness citation to their students, to their seventh-grade students. So it's been good to build those relationships and to build that trust with our, with our public school system here in Cottage Grove. And, you know, I'm, I'm just really impressed with the partnership and their, their willingness and, and really just wanting to get out and connect with us and have a good, strong partnership. And so that is their principals and their staff in the schools are, have really been welcoming to me and have been very inviting to us to come and participate in the activities and stuff. So just some more community engagement, and then a couple of programs, services, if you will. The Trauma Intervention Program, which is a nonprofit that provides immediate service and assistance to folks who are experiencing trauma. So one of the, one of the, probably the, the best examples I can use is if there's a, a death in the family, right? If, if some, if a loved one dies in the home and police are called out to do the investigation, but there's a lot of questions left. You have the grieving family, and you have a lot of questions about what, what steps to go through next, and a lot of people don't understand what the investigation's going to entail, how to call for, you know, the funeral home and, and what do you do with the loved one, you know, after everybody leaves and what do you do with the house? So these folks are trained volunteers. They come out, they sit with, with the family, they help them through the grieving process in the initial stages while they're experiencing this, this trauma. And it's a huge support for us as law enforcement officers because a lot of times, this is one of those things where it's just that, that duty that's kind of fallen to us to do in addition to trying to do the investigation and everything else. So when we can partner with an organization with a nonprofit like this, the cost to us is nothing. All we ask is that we call them. And so we call and they show up. So it's been a really good partnership. And then Kindness nine-one-one, this is a program that, that we joined up with just a couple of months ago, and it's just another opportunity for us to connect with the community, to recognize, you know, kindness with, within the community, and specifically, if we notice any member of the community or somebody who we interact with, who's, you know, committing an act of kindness, we can, we can issue them a kindness citation and just recognize them. So it's a chance for our officers to also interact with people and, and recognize them for kindness in, in a different way than they're normally would be interacting with in their roles as a, as a former police officer. So it's been a great program, it's been well-received, and, you know, like I said, it's, it's turned in right now to a regular monthly kindness assembly attendance for me at Lincoln Middle School. So every month I go there as part of their kindness assembly, and the principal has somebody already pre-selected, and, and then I get to go up in, in the assembly in front of the school and issue the student a kindness citation, a gift card to Dutch Brothers. So it's been pretty well-received. So it's a great program. So, and then just in conclusion here, we kind of, you know, we're, we're trying to build our presence on social media. We know we have a really good following there now. A lot of people are coming to us as we're trying to put out more factual information and be as transparent as possible through our social media channels. And there's a great picture down there in the bottom right corner of Shop with the Cop and, and the turnout that we had this year. We had all of our officers there, we had our police chaplain dressed up like Santa Claus, and we got to meet some, some really neat kids and take them shopping. So, and we did that with, through a partnership with Walmart. They, they made a significant donation to, to our police department so we could use that money for those kids to buy gifts for their families. And so the, the, the fun part of that was, is this was the day of the shopping with the cop with the kids, but prior to that, Captain Marsh and I were able to take Fuji to Walmart, and we did the shopping for the kids who were going to be the shoppers. So, and so when they showed up, they already had a gift that was wrapped. So they were, they didn't know that. They were there shopping for their families, but we had already gone, like, before, whenever. So we went shopping and spent some time at Walmart picking out gifts for those kids. So it was a lot of fun, and it was just another way for us to connect with the community and to give back. And we were, the support that we got from Walmart and from the community members, just people shopping in there, was just overwhelmingly positive. People were just happy to see us out there, happy to see us doing this, these community engagement activities. And, and so I can't say enough about, you know, the, the reception that I've had since I've been here and what I continue to see for our department. The supporting Cottage Grove is amazing. It's a great place to be, it's a great community, it's a great place to be a cop. It's, it's just really been a lot of fun for me, and I've enjoyed it. So lastly, this amazing document that you have in front of you is put together by Brooke, sitting right up here next to her. So Brooke Crowe is our administrative assistant. She does a lot of work helping me in, in my day-to-day activities of running the police department. She provides a tremendous amount of support to me every day, and she doesn't like this because she always says, I'm the one that's back in the shadows, you guys go do your homework. So I'm putting her on the spot because she does amazing work for us. We're lucky to have her, and this document is her work. So this was basically me making a bunch of suggestions and writing stuff down and, you know, putting together, you know, our, our records and evidence team with Jill, just pulling all of this data and all of these numbers, and they do a phenomenal job at that as well. So we wouldn't have that without them either. And then they, we just, on Brooke's desk, so kudos to her, great job. So, and that's it. I just want to thank you all for your continued support. You guys have all been great since I've been here. I know I've interacted with all of you, as, you know, sometimes in, in this setting, but as individuals as well. You guys have been a tremendous support for me, and I don't take that lightly. So we have a lot of work to do, I'm really excited about the future, and this is just the beginning for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. We want to commend you on all the positive changes that you made and commend the department. We could not be happier with everything, and thank you for, for your important contribution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item D, Annual TMDL Update to the Mayor and Council Staff Report by City Planner, Mr. Monkin.
Mayor, if I just might, might be some questions. Item C, hold the offer that was presented, it's been rescinded, so that's why there's no discussion on item C.
Thank you. Good evening again, Mayor and Council. Brooke, maybe you can come over to my office and we can talk about making this paper look a little bit snappier next year. Part of the city's approved TMDL implementation, implementation plan. Tonight, I'm providing an annual update to council on the city's efforts to meet the plan's requirements and to preview, preview action items for this year. Before I get too far into the information, I'd just like to state that the city has received approval for its efforts during the twenty-two, twenty-three cycle from DEQ. The TMDL Implementation Plan for Cottage Grove describes the strategies the city uses or intends to use The TMDL Implementation Plan for Cottage Grove describes the strategies the city uses or intends to use in order to reduce various forms of pollution in the Coast Fork Sub Basin of the Willamette River. The bodies of water included within the Coast Fork Sub Basin under the jurisdiction of Cottage Grove include Coast Fork, Willamette River, Row River, and Silk Creek. The overarching goal of the implementation plan is to minimize, or whenever possible, eliminate the different types of pollution contributions to surface waters within the jurisdictional control of the city of Cottage Grove. Primary pollutant targets are bacteria, temperature, and mercury. Through a combination of strategies that include education and outreach, pollution prevention, hillside development permitting, riparian zone protections, erosion control, and stormwater management. City of Cottage Grove has made a commitment to work to reduce non-point source pollution through this TMDL Implementation Plan. Staff has been updating the TMDL Implementation Plan every five years as required by DEQ since its adoption in 2008. Most of the strategies outlined in the current 23 to 28 matrix are continuations of the ongoing projects that have proven successful over the last 15 years in addressing TMDL concerns or issues. Examples include things like our relief pickup program, street sweeping, effluent storage and retention, riparian and hillside development code standards, urban forestry committee tree planting, partnership with the Coast Fork Willamette Watership Council. I mentioned erosion prevention, the newer stormwater detention and treatment ordinance and other items such as our illicit discharge detection elimination ordinance and some other upgrades to the city's fats, oil, oils and grease program. Items that will come up this year that will put our focus into are a more robust enforcement of the city's fog program, that's the fats, oils, and grease, and our IDTE, which is that illicit discharge detection elimination program. For the IDTE program, this will include development code updates to require new development that occurs to include things such as covered garbage enclosures with sanitary sewer drainage. So it rains in Oregon, didn't know. And a dumpster without a roof is just a point source violation daily. So that amendment will be coming to you all between now and September. Through the spring and summer though, in addition to emphasis on fog and IDE, it's hard to say, isn't it? We'll also be looking at really trying to successfully ramp up our upstream art program. You might be familiar with this program, it's utilized by many other cities in the state of Oregon, DAs that are subject to TMDLs. This would be something where a local artist would do a street mural or sidewalk mural adjacent to a catch basin to raise awareness that whatever goes down that catch basin does not get treated and it goes straight into our waterways. It's a way to create some neighborhood feel, some placemaking, but also educate individuals within the different parts of town. So hopeful to get that happening. Another component of our current five-year TMDL plan, if you follow the city of Springfield, today they published their component on this, but what we will need to do is do a qualitative assessment on the efficacy of the city's efforts to educate the community on reducing point source violations. So staff will develop a survey and put it out to the public so that we can test, if you will, how well we're getting the word out about keeping things out of the drain, only rain in the drain, things like that. So that'll be something that we have to craft in-house and come up with. But check out the one that Springfield published today, I think they did a really good job. And so with that, the annual report is complete and I'm available for any questions.
How are we doing with compliance in DEQ?
We, Mayor and Councilman, today we have had no written or verbal compliance issues from DEQ in the last year. Staff has supported DEQ with investigations, however, into reported cases of potential violations and found that none were present. And so we're in a good place in that regard, both in stormwater and sanitary sewer.
Thank you, Mr. Monkin. Item C, Zipli Presentation, Staff Report by Assistant City Manager, Mr. Moon.
Thank you, Mayor. So Zipli is a fiber internet company currently in negotiations for a franchise agreement with the city of Cottage Grove. Zipli would like the city's undergrounded, undergrounding ordinance to be amended or repealed and has thus requested an opportunity to make a presentation here tonight. I believe, I hope we have a Zipli representative, we do, standing right here. And I will turn it over to you.
Thank you. I don't know if I can go so far as to say amended or repealed. We might have a way to navigate through the existing language, so thank you, Jake. For the record, I'm Jessica Athlean, the Vice President of Regulatory and External Affairs for Zipli Fiber. Took the long drive down I-5 today, stopped off at a few of our jobs and took a look at things that were going on. I appreciate your time here this evening, the marathon is almost over, so trying to contain your excitement for seeing the end. It's very clear to me sitting here tonight and just what I've reviewed, that this council is very focused on economic development, the economic future of Cottage Grove. And you're probably wondering who is effectively fibered and how can they possibly help with that picture? We know that fiber enables economic development. The city of Detroit in 2020 undertook a study that proved that the initial investment of a fiber network into a city pays back five times the economic development within five years. I can tell you my own experience there, we did a build in 2020. I have watched that city grow immensely despite having lost most of the real estate to devastating wildfires in 2020. Zipli Fiber is a telephone company that operates in about 40% of the city. In fact, if you just go south of here to the north of here, we're actually a telephone company who have centrally here. We would be a competitor to them entering this market. When we undertook this mission in 2020, we were investing $500 million of our own money to overlay our existing network to upgrade it to fiber capability. Today, the cities that are served by our network have the fastest internet in America. That's not a punchline, that's not a joke, there's a CNN article out there that actually verifies it. 50 gig service, which is a really big pipe to a house, we have that today and we will stay ahead of the curve going forward. Because we've designed a network that is resilient and redundant and can serve the needs of today, tomorrow, and the next hundred years. Our goal is to come into the city of Cottage Grove and give you access to that network. We want to build quickly, we want to serve all 1,000 locations made up of residences and businesses here in Cottage Grove. We'd like to do that in 2024. We've been working very closely with Jake, he's been a great partner through this. And we've gotten to this one last issue, which is that all new facilities located in the city of Cottage Grove must be undergrounded. Now I had a chance to drive around today, you have a mixture, right? You have a lot of places in the city where there is some undergrounding that has already occurred. In fact, there's some areas where all I see above ground is combs right now. Our intention would be to come into the city, build where you have aerial today. So where all the rest of the facilities are aerially, we'd like to build in that same, that felt. When everyone goes underground, we will pay our share and go into joint trench, put our facilities underground. But by forcing Zipli to only build underground, there's no possible way I can serve you in 2024. I economically probably can't serve most of the city. Because I'm making a personal investment, really looking at the cost to go underground. It's very, very expensive when you're undertaking it as a new entrant to the market. You've had the advantages of utilities that have built the facilities over time. They have put, you know, some efforts into putting things underground, but largely you are an aerially based utility service throughout the city. So if you look at chapter 1434 or 500, which is where the city code requires undergrounding of all utilities, there is an exception. And so we would ask that council direct staff to exercise its exemption under part B in that part to give us the opportunity to come in today and follow the way your utilities are currently situated. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
I'm currently, and hope soon to be, a former CenturyLink customer. I've been currently without phone or internet services for over a month. They've been very unresponsive to even the requests that they get their damaged pole and, and lines out of the public thoroughfare. And I'm not, my only concern is that, that its overhead was the problem there apparently, so they... I'm not sure how you would also address an ice storm that we currently experience.
We, we did as well, and I think it speaks volumes that Zipli went through the same storm. I was on the same calls with CenturyLink, my network never put down. My customers never lost service. In fact, we were standing up Verizon and AT&amp;T and T-Mobile when they had no other option because unfortunately the competitor was not offering service.
Councilor Dura.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you for coming today. What's the cost difference for you to do what you're proposing, which is to string where there's string to underground where there's already pipes versus if you had to underground, what would that cost difference look like?
Roughly five times the construction costs. Installing conduit would likely require directionally boring, back of the napkin mass, about 150 bucks a foot. And that's before I have any service there.
I also appreciate you coming and presenting this. Some of the considerations I'm thinking of balancing are, you know, we want competition to drive prices down and better service for residents here. That's something that we're obliged to, to look into and make sure that our residents have this advantage available to them. And one of those is certainly in fiber. I know that we have extensive fiber laid, I believe it's city-owned. And so part of my, my thought is, is there integration with that existing that would happen with that facilitate a build-out? Granted, I, I'm not super up on, on how that will logistically look, what kind of agreements there are. I am interested to look at that section of our code. I do understand the disadvantage as a newcomer coming in and competing on an uneven competition ground. And when to enter the market, you would have to spend far more than existing here. I would say that we have not enough competition, not enough incentive for our existing service providers to, to be concerned about the service that's their delivery. So I'm interested in seeing competition come in. I'm interested in seeing if there's a way that makes it work for us that does balance. We clearly have an ordinance here because we think that it goes to quality of life, to not see aerial. And, you know, those are pretty poorly maintained, not to speak to your particular company, but with our existing ones, we have pretty bad maintenance of our, of our comm lines around town. So anything that could, that could properly balance that, I would be interested in entertaining. What's your kind of timeline, what are you looking for? This, you know, if there's an opportunity, you're here, what are your, what are your objectives?
We'd like to be in construction by May.
You'd like to be in construction by May.
Which means we need a franchise agreement soon.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure I really understand what you offer. Is it phone and internet and what's your average price? So that I'm understanding what kind of competition you'd be bringing to our residents.
Great question, thank you so much for that. So we would be providing data services, which would be voice over IP or voice over internet protocol. It's a, a voice connection similar to what you have today with a cable operator, right? They're, they're offering not a twisted hair copper, which is what you get. CenturyLink, they're offering a hybrid option. Our price point starts at $20 a month for 100 over 100 service, and that's data. $10 more if you're going to have a phone.
I'm sorry, maybe I'm like really thick right now, but like landlines.
Yes, so, so a landline, a phone that rings at your house that's traveling to you through the comms lines that can get delivered there many different ways. CenturyLink delivers it over what you would traditionally think of as a copper, time division, multiplex service or TV or copper. I can get really dirty on this, it's way too late for that at this stage in the game, but that's...
Amarin would enjoy it.
That's, that's one version of how you'd do it. Cable delivers it over coax cables, that funny little plug with the thing sticking out of the middle of it. That's your coax plug that usually goes in the back of the set-top box. They're also delivering a voice service, but it's not traveling through the public switch, public switch network that CenturyLink is doing. I would be delivering yet another option, which would do something very similar to what cable's doing, but with a whole lot more stability. And that would be over the internet, right? So I would digitize your voice service the same way your cell phone does, the same way frankly coax ultimately does, and delivering that call. So it would be a regular voice, it would be dial tone, you could pick up, you know, regular phone in your house. We'd just be traveling differently with the future. Now with the advantage of Zipli as compared to other competitors, because we are a voice provider already in the state, we have a, a switch, so a really big switch that takes care of all of that transportation. So you'd be on my network at the time and then be leaving and going to someone else's network, which is how other providers would deliver. So I can provide you resiliency and redundancy that others just frankly can't.
Why did your network not go down during the ice storm, while the others did?
Lots and lots and lots of time and our team designing a network. So when we come into Cottage Grove, we'll have four paths out. So Mackenzie Bridge gets blocked, that doesn't bother us because we have three other options. And the way that we design our network, we can make that transition as we start to see lag within our packet loss. We can do it seamlessly. So your router wouldn't even drop at home, it wouldn't be like everything reset all of a sudden, you would have no idea that we had to re-gun that truck.
Thank you, Mayor. From what I'm understanding, excuse me, from what I'm understanding, your ask is that you utilize existing spaces and existing methodology, but the moment things go underground, you're like, I'm all in. Because ultimately, I think part of what we just saw is the weight of the ice, whole lines down, road pulls and hat. And I don't know how you stay on when there's lines all over the ground. I mean, there was live wire all over town. So ultimately, I think it would be the best idea to go underground, which is why we have that ordinance. But it absolutely, to me, seems reasonable to utilize existing methodology and then go all in when everybody else can go all in. It's financially or cost-effective to go all in with partners versus case solo over here. It costs a lot. So I'm in support of this and I'm curious to know.
So on that point, when we come into a market, we're going to evaluate the pole loads, right? We have to, that's an obligation. So if the pole is compromised, it can't withstand the load, we're going to design around it, which means I'm going underground there. There's lots and lots of examples of pole owners who have not maintained their poles. It's not really unique to Cottage Grove, unfortunately. And as a pole owner myself, I know the standards which we maintain, we just have a different approach. We want our stuff to be usable by everybody. And so when we come to town, we'll take a much closer look at the state of those poles. We may choose to underground when other people are aerial, probably more often than not, particularly in areas where you've seen split poles.
Thank you. So kind of picking up on that same thought, right? The time, a time, a window of time for a provisional allowance is really what we're talking about here. So what do you envision your build-out time to be to get, right? There's a, there's time to adopt new customers, there's a marketing push, there's, you know, you want to, you want to get strung out as for many connections as you can make, but to get your, to be most... you can make, but to get your, to be most, you know, to get your, build, build your biggest revenue base, that's going to take maybe five, however many months or years that it's going to take. And while you're doing that, to get up to, I mean, what's the standard to get to the deployment level of the competition or to, can you kind of explain that? Because we said within a year, you have a year to avoid the under, all the undergrounding.
I would take that all day long because I'm planning to be done in about 12 weeks, start to finish. And I don't need a revenue base. We've made the capital investment for Cottage Grove. We've set the money aside. We're coming in and we'll build wall to wall. This is a one-time build because our goal is to get in here, get it built, get it usable, and give your citizens what they want.
So that's what I'm asking about the get it built. What that means, that mean, what does that mean? That's not connections to houses, is it?
So that's service connections and I can't trespass on private property. I have to have a service order. So once I have a network in the public right of way, from the point that it's strung throughout the public right of way and accessible to every home and business in the city of Cottage Grove, that's when my build is considered complete. From that point forward to your point, yes, customers will call and order service and then we will go into the home, however utilities are there today. If those drops, which are on private property, service drops are coming in aerially, we will follow that same path. If it's coming in underground, we will take that path. If the aerial isn't safe, we will go underground.
Okay, so Jake, you might be, you're probably the most well-versed in this besides you. If there's not an existing service connection or it's been down for a certain amount of time, I think, then our ordinance kicks in and there's a, the mandate to go underground from the pole to the service connection. I am curious to know what that kind of time is because I know some people will take down those connections if they're not utilizing them. And, and what point does that mandate that you go underground? Because that's, that's what we're talking about. If you have new service coming in, so maybe you're, maybe you've got a charter on a coax connection. So you're saying, hey, we're, I don't know what right of, or is it?
Fiber, glass.
So area of fiber into, so you're going to go right next to, presumably we're going to double, double the connections aerials because there's a line there and we're going to go another line right next to it. So that, that part is kind of counter to, to what we're looking for, which is less lines in the sky. So how would you, is there a proposal to fix that? Because I don't think we want more lines in the sky, but we probably wouldn't mind the same number of lines with more competition, lower prices, better service. Is there any way that?
Are you suggesting to resell on Charter's network?
No.
Okay. Because that's not.
What I'm contemplating is if service is dropped with Charter, that we do something with the Charter's line.
Oh, for individual homes? Like if my house, if I've got Charter and then I decide I'm going to Zipley instead.
Charter that we need to get rid of the other line so we don't just have a dead line.
I don't know, I don't believe we have that. I know that requirement is not in our ordinance. I would have to go through the franchise agreement with Charter to see what it says in there. But I suspect in general, they, they tend to leave them up because, you know, like you've got a rental, let's say, person A moves in, they get cable service, they move out, person B moves in, doesn't want it. It's not worth the company's time to take down the line and then the next person moves in six months later and then put it back up again. So they tend to leave them once they're there.
Because it's cheaper for them to reinstall the service. They don't have to go install.
The way our ordinance is written, it's if you are installing anything new, as it stands right now, if you're installing anything new, that has to. So for example, if there isn't already, you know, Charter doesn't have a line to your house and you say, hey Charter, give me, you know, hook me up, then they would have to underground from wherever their.
Kind of the question is, is it feasible to enter this market if we said, hey, no, you can't just run an extra line? I mean, it's a lot more undergrounding, but if you could go to the service points and poles and then underground everything from there.
From the poles to the property?
Yeah.
That's not any different than you see other places. So that, that wouldn't be a consideration to us. Now, that's not an obstacle. The obstacle is the right way, right? You've got a lot, a lot of mileage to cover around the right way.
So that could be the compromise. The right of way could be existing, but the moment it goes to the customer, it's guaranteed to be underground.
Because that, that dramatically reduces the aerial visual load in neighborhoods across yards where the, where the trues are, if they are hard to get to.
Yes. With the reveratory plow technologies that are deployed today, it's actually, in some cases, easier to go underground and sweeping. But ground buried quality fiber, doesn't have to go into a conduit, cut a six inch trench across the property, get it to the service point.
Love that.
Not a big deal.
Thank you. Councilor, when you mentioned a window of time to not have to comply with our ordinance or something to that effect, is that part of our ordinance that I missed or?
No.
Construction, yeah, that it's, and that, I mean, that's the perfect take, right? We, aerial is vast. It is less expensive and it means that we can cover a wider area. You know, that's why we come typically looking at aerial first. I'm sure it was a great candidate for that. For this ordinance, we would be done and you guys would be having a very different conversation with me tonight.
Thanks. I have a concern. It seems as if you'd said, well, we don't necessarily need a, a, an exception. But I think an exception works similar to, you get, such as somebody wants. Other than that, I think we are kind of, it seems like we're kind of deciding what is. That's, it's always, it's not necessarily nice to, but the reason that it is eligible, what, why it happens. I, I was worried about what that would mean for the next company when they come along. Same thing, we grant the exception. Basically nullifies to me doing this. That basis.
Mayor, my councilor senate, so in 14.34.500B, the exception to undergrounding requirement, an exception to the undergrounding requirement may be granted due to physical constraints, one, such as steep topography, sensitive lands, or existing development conditions. I think, but if I understand what is being said here is the existing development conditions is what's already common practice or deployed throughout the city. So she says that if it's aerial already existing.
No, you're, you have exactly.
Then they could do the existing conditions. There's many areas, virtually all the new developments since the undergrounding has been developed in the city is underground. So like Sunrise Ridge, the new developments, all that area is all underground and they would have to go underground because that's seek distant conditions. So what they're asking is not the city to make a exception is probably the request this evening is to ask council if you agree with their interpretation of existing conditions.
Well, I would say largely do, except for the, where there's existing lines. If somebody's going to get their service in place of, say, Charter, I'm not, I don't like the idea of there being two lines in the air now. Contrary to the thrust behind undergrounding, which is more resiliency, which is better, better resiliency for underground. And better visual experience for residents. And I'm not sure, I thought, I thought I heard you say that even if there wasn't an existing service connection from a pole, that you would be undergrounding even if there was, but right before that, I heard you say that you would go right along the side of it. So I guess I want clarity on that again. Got a pole, you've got a house with existing coax or copper. Would you be, and you're at the pole, say, interpret this clause to say you can come to the pole, would you be undergrounding to get, if, if the customer says, hey, we want your service?
If the city required it, we would. If the conditions, it's very site specific. So I'm, I'm kind of hypothesizing about a thousand different options, literally Cottage Grove. So, you know, I, I saw examples today where there's no way you would follow that service line. Like there's, it's just danger. You don't go there, right? There are places where people have paved well beyond their driveway, right? And that's where it starts to get a little complicated because now I'm talking about directionally boring or, you know, it's the homeowner, they get to make that decision. They want to put conduit in, I can put my service drop through it. We can talk about, you know, getting shallow plow and if there's space for me to put that, that service drop in, absolutely can do that, right? It, it's very site specific. If the city said you can't install service drops any way other than underground.
That was my primary question. Would that keep you from coming to Cottage Grove?
I don't think so. It would significantly limit the locations that would be able to get service from us initially, right? Because that's just a time. And that, the whole benefit of competition and providing people choices, you want, we kind of be giving them an option. I also, I mean, haven't explored this question because this is the first time I've seen a city contemplate private property rights. I don't know if the city can actually dictate what somebody can do on their private property.
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to share a couple of things. So for instance, the Cottage Grove Museum and Beale House, they want to, internet service, which they hadn't had before, to provide brand new service, they did go underground from an existing pole into both of those facilities. So that was something that was brand new. I would share with you just a hypothetical situation. Yeah, that may make it tough is, is that if you, if they were able to bring lines down the alleys down between Main Street and Gibbs or Main Street of Washington, but those to require them to go underground from those poles might be a very big challenge because each of those alleyways already have water sewer storm and gas in them. And so being able to underground that may make it impossible for them to provide service in these locations. So I, I'm just throwing out some ideas or some actual practical things that would need to be considered if you try to craft a thought that is mandating them to do certain things, you might be eliminating being able to provide services because of the, you know, the challenges that exist currently for them to make it happen.
Yeah, I appreciate that one here. It seems to be a hard balance because in a discretionary thing, and I'm very curious on how we navigate that now.
So at the risk of being the rain on the parade guy, the reason that I do not agree that the exception in B applies in this case, or at least for most of it, the way it's worded, an exception to the underground requirement may be granted due to physical constraints such as, and then it gives three examples of physical constraints, which are steep topography, sensitive lands, and existing development conditions. Existing develop, reading existing development conditions as, well, other people have lines in the area is not a physical constraint. Those existing development conditions are things like Mr. Stewart just mentioned with the, well, this alley is completely full of underground stuff, there's no other room to go there. Or if you had, you know, we, the railroad won't let us go underground, we're going to have to go overhead over the railroads. Those are existing development conditions that create those physical constraints. I, I personally don't think that the interpretation that, that that includes just what other folks have done overhead, it really covers what that is trying to say.
Thank you. And it would seem that the ordinance mandates a new condition, says you have to, something new, this, this condition has to.
Right. Because otherwise that, that exception would swallow up the entire ordinance. Because if you could just put it anywhere there is already anything else, then the ordinance no longer means anything anywhere. But that would be my.
So if we really wanted this, we'd have to consider opening up, this comes back to the temporary window thing. If we, to promote competition and better service for internet, phone, we desire to create an exemption for new service coming in to go where it currently can't exist and then at some point close that window so that there's somewhat of a fair competition of existing infrastructure. And then all of the other ordinance would apply, which is if you can't go down the alley because of those reasons, therein lies your constraints for when you underground versus when you, when you go aerial. That's kind of what I'm hearing.
It just seems like we might as well repeal the ordinance if we're going to say because of the way things already are, we're not going to make some change. If you're going to say we're going to change. If we're ready to go there as proven, then that's fine. I just think the intent, how strong would we attach the intent to keep? Do we need the lines to go underground that bad? What, I mean, it's hard to know the intent of the council that, I mean, how long it's spending.
2017?
I would like personally.
Since 2007? No, it's 1870.
Talk to legal on this and do a consulting, just individually get this thought.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just say usually when we're, if we're talking about repealing or lending in an ordinance, we would at least have some track changes red line version or staff analysis. I'm not prepared to make decisions without staff analysis and I'm getting conflicting staff analysis too. So I appreciate the mayor's suggestion.
Yeah, I was also, it was mentioned that the city operates a fiber network.
The, the fiber loop that we have in town?
Yeah, so that's just in the downtown area?
Well, it's wide of that. It hits all the schools, the fire station, the library. We can show you it now.
And would that be in competition with the Zipley or would it be redundant or?
Not necessarily, maybe. I know there's, we've got an RFP out for running the, you know, for, for operating that, that fiber loop. I don't know what more I can say.
It's an institutional network, right? So it's meant to serve city government, community anchor institutions, places of community interest. It's not in direct competition with the retail provider. Anything you would like to come to the city and say, I can help you. Can give you some more resiliency, redundancy, capacity. Can we help with operating or not? In multiple cities across the four states that Zipley operates in, we have various arrangements for how we support communities that we come into, up to and including running your network for them. So maybe we can do a staff analysis, let's put this dot com agenda on. So maybe we can do a staff analysis with this dot com agenda.
I have a second question. With the, this requires a, a new franchise agreement with Ripley as well?
Yep.
Okay.
Mr. Monkin.
Thank you, Mayor. Because this is in the development code, any changes to this section would take at least a thirty-five day notice to the L C D. That's not an overnight item. For a matter of a minute to make such amendment. I'd also encourage counsel to look at the beginning of the chapter referenced by, by Jessica, in that there's the purpose and applicability of that entire chapter. Fourteen thirty-four is very important because it ties into the city's transportation system plan. It talks about quality of life, which I've heard. There's more to it than just that one caveat, Mr. Bill's analysis regarding the such as, the physical constraints such as, et cetera. I think that there is something there, but I still think. For other things, the last thing would be, as Jessica stated, we can't really control overhead on private property. We do, as in my role, I do process permits from Spectrum, Charter, Century Link for new service. Often, they don't need to be twelve inches deep. Usually it's a hand, can't shovel. Hire anybody off the street to, to dig those smaller. It's, it's not much to go from a J-Ped or a pole to somebody's house because it's very shallow. And so that's often not that big a deal. But there's a lot to it to just make the amendment. There's probably just a clear path to determine whether or not it can go with these, with the existing conditions component of things. Because I don't agree that it would negate the whole purpose because if you have pretty few developments such as Project Sparrow, there's nothing, right? There is an overhead. And so it wouldn't mean that because overheads across town that we can do. So anyway, that's it. Too conflicting, but the big thing would be the thirty-five day notice to the L C.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Concerns from counsel. This is from the city manager.
Well, good evening, Your Honor, members of the council. The hour is late. I will attempt to be brief. Just as a follow-up to our last council meeting, we have scheduled our work session on homelessness for Saturday, May eighteenth. I want to thank the mayor and the council members for your flexibility. Sometimes scheduling meetings around everybody's calendar can be a bit more of an art than a science. So thank you to our city recorder for going through the process of getting everybody's council calendars together. And Mindy and I are actually going to be meeting with the facilitator from St. Vincent de Paul to discuss locate logistics like location agenda. I'll set up the meeting room and that sort of thing. And we'll be reporting back to the council on that hopefully in your next meeting. I want to thank everyone who turned out for the AdHoc Street Improvement Funding Committee Town Hall. I was looking around earlier to see if Amber was here this evening. Was going to thank her personally for chairing that committee and also the committee members. Thank you to Fay for all the work that they did. You know, having eight or nine different meetings with different groups around the community. And the two of them definitely did the heavy lifting at the town hall, answering everybody's questions. So thank you for that. And also on the same lines, thank you for everyone who came to coffee with a cop this last Thursday and also want to thank four eight one eight for hosting the event that year. And finally, I want to thank the mayor for inviting me to the Art Walk last Friday. I enjoyed the opportunity to meet all of the downtown businesses and get to know all those folks. So I'm arguing with them for the next ones. So that would conclude my report. But Fay Stewart, talk for a moment about what's going on in the state legislature.
Thank you, Aaron Council. I just wanted to share what I believe is some pretty positive news. In-house bill, a engrossed House Bill forty-one twenty-eight. It has to do with funding for infrastructure that promotes housing developments. And so in this bill, it has forty-six entities that are called out for specific amounts of money. And Cottage Grove is one of thirteen that have, are being, is called out in there for a three million dollar support from the state for infrastructure. I'd like to, to say thank you to Counselor Savage for her assistance in this effort. We were able, under her work, she was able to secure a meeting with Representative Conrad, which we were able to share our four and a half million dollar request for infrastructure funding. And then she also secured a meeting with the governor's office staff and the principal staff person that was writing this bill. I would like, this is not a matter I'd like to, I know that it's through that effort and our proactive effort of presenting what our request is and what it would lead to as far as housing in Cottage Grove is why we're one of thirteen receiving recommendation of the top three million dollar contribution. I would share that out of, there's forty-six total out of the two hundred and forty-one total cities in this, in Oregon, that's being called out and it's, the total amount is right now is eighty-nine million, almost ninety million dollars. Thank you, Counselor Savage, for your effort in, in getting this, this far and fingers crossed that it'll get across the finish line with the signature of the governor here in the next month.
Thank you. Did I miss a chance for concerns and no one else had any?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I have a few, if not several, questions for Chief Chase. Is that, is this not the venue for that? I mean, I don't need to ask them now. I just.
Can I post it?
Yeah.
So.
I wasn't trying to hold things up now. I just, it sparked a lot of ideas.
No, absolutely. If that's.
We talked about doing that at coffee.
Yeah.
Let's get that. Yeah. Thank you.
So in that invitation.